Good evening, I want to call the Board a Selectment's meeting to order for Monday, July 23, 2018. Previously, we were in executive session to review some matters and we actually tabled our minutes.
Approved the minutes?
We approved, we successfully approved the minutes and we tabled our number two, our item on the SEIU and we will come back to that at a later date, so. As required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Is there anyone for weekly briefing? Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. I've got a few things here that I just wanted to touch on. First, great news is that we've started Station Two. The land's been cleared. Robert Howard's now on site finishing up that clearing process and gonna start doing some water main work. He and I have met with the representative from Mill City. Tremendous individual, have a lot of confidence in him and we're underway. I'll keep you briefed as time goes on. We're actually hoping to have a, working with Jamie, is even a Timelapse camera out there.
Right, yeah.
I'm hoping Jamie's gonna nod her head yes. Jamie says yes. So, everybody will be able to watch that progress. It's gonna be, it's exciting. As a citizen of the town of Howard, I think we take a lot of things for granted. I know I do. You go and you turn the faucet on, you water your garden, you flush your toilets, but when the water doesn't work, it's a problem. And Saturday morning, I looked out in front of my house, there was water coming up through the street. And within an hour, I made a call to the Water Department on a Saturday, beautiful Saturday where most are enjoying the beaches and the ponds and the bike trails. A crew from the Water Department showed up within an hour and spent the day fixing the water main on Captain's Lane. They are unsung heroes, much like Lynx here are DPW. They are unsung heroes. They had no trouble getting the folks back to make that repair and that happens all the time. So, I just want everybody to know that, you know, the police and fire, you know, we have more visibility, we make more noise than they do, but people like the Water Department and the DPW really do a great job. So, I was happy to see them show up and I said, "This is, I'm pretty proud of this town when you have, when you have folks like that." Steve Hickson and the crew show up. We had a very serious accident Saturday involving two cars and it's a very unusual thing, believe it or not, to have a car accident when one car catches fire and quickly was completely involved in fire. Luckily, there was a bystander that helped the individual that was in the car that caught fire. Two people were injured, taken to the hospital. Point being, we were very short and of course, we don't have one call at a time, we had three at a time. So, we responded to that accident as a third call within minutes with just two firefighters. Without the help of the Howard Police Department, the outcome would have been drastically different. I have emailed the police chief, the deputy chief, and copied the town administrator on three police officers that stepped up and actually did patient care, positioned their cruisers to stop the traffic, protect all of us, and actually did patient care while we tried to contain this fire. The gas tank let go, it was a serious situation. So, kudos to the Howard Police Department. Two days earlier, in North Howard, we had a very serious bicycle accident at the crossing 500 Depot Street. I happened to be close enough where I was the first one there and there was a member of the DPW that tended this young man, this small boy that got hit by a car and was doing everything right. He made sure that the scene was safe and rendered first aid to that young man. Highway Department, Highway Department. I've since talked to the director and appropriate letters have been sent. Finally, I just want to thank the community. Don, we had a great ceremony last week for Captain Clark, his last day after 36 years and then he was the keynote speaker for his replacement. So, that was pretty cool. So, I want to thank the community, Don, and the folks that showed up. It was really a special moment for the Howard Fire Department and for the town of Howard. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for the update and all the fabulous departments that we have and do such a great job. We appreciate that. Good evening, Lynx.
I'm Madam Chair, Lynx Hooper, DPW Director. Thank you, Chief Clark. And that individual that Chief Clark was talking about was a summer kid that's been with us, I believe his third summer, and he really stepped to the plate. I read Chief Clark's letter out loud to a gathering of all the staff and he received a standing round of ovation from our staff. Did an excellent job. I received a call from Tom Caruso, Treasure Chest Chairman, bright and early this morning to inform me how well the Treasure Chest operations are working out and with the Howard-only restriction that the board supported and has now been in place for at least two weeks in July. Tom wanted you to know that your constituents, let's say, wholeheartedly approve of the new policy. He says he has yet to run into a single Howard resident that was unhappy with the change. From my staff's perspective, that the amount of things that we're throwing out after a weekend has almost been cut in half. So, it really has become more pleasurable for the volunteers, more pleasurable for the visitors of the Treasure Chest, the patrons of the Treasure Chest, and far more manageable for the volunteers. I think this has been a very positive thing, other than some hate mail I've received from non-residents who do not pay my salary. I'd also like to inform the board that the cell tower at Route 39 and 137 in front of Station Two has finally been repaired. You may have noticed, there hasn't been a flag up there since March. The end of March, I notified SBA, I contacted SBA, the tower owner, that panels had flown off during some of those storms we had received and that their tower was in desperate need of attention. Now, they have piecemealed this tower. At the top, there's an array that sticks out a little further than the rest. That has caused us constant problems with our rope fetching up on it, flying a flag, as well as panels falling off, which is a safety hazard. They had to have it redesigned from scratch. They just finished installing it, I believe, last Tuesday or Wednesday and we're finally able to put the flag back up. Their lease agreement calls for them to allow us to fly a flag. I met with the town administrator several times on this issue. He had a suggestion that maybe we get them to put a temporary flag, so we'd have one for Flag Day, Memorial Day, and the Fourth of July. By the time we got around to that, we couldn't find a contractor to install a flag in a timely fashion. So, SBA has been trying to appease us to some degree and knows we're not happy with them. To that end, given the activity and the clearing that's gone over there, we've noticed the fence is all down. They're in the process of replacing the fence around all their equipment and they've also agreed to provide us a five-foot, a four-foot vinyl stockade fence around the lights. I also had a conversation with Chief Clark this morning and asked him of his palate about clearing the rest of the scrub pines out of that area and trying to just give the whole place a facelift and make it into a little park. I know we don't have a plan, I know that we don't have necessarily a budget. With your consent, I'd like to go in there and start the process of clearing out the scrub pines, loam and seeding it. I believe Chief Clark is gonna have irrigation for the new station that we could tie into and irrigate it and make a nice park that's inviting to people rather than the eyesore that we have now. Once before, when they, I believe when the original lease agreement, it called that we were gonna make a park out of it and that just never materialized for one reason or another.
Do you, do we have a rough estimate on those costs?
Madam Chair, I don't, but most of this would be sunk labor from my standpoint, meaning that we can go in and clear and there's really no cost to that, it's just our labor. We can go in and loam. I've got a stockpile of loam from the middle, the high school project. We can go and do a lot of it. I talked to Chief Clark, who feels he may be able to contribute to this down the way, you know, with some plantings other than grass and maybe a trail and some benches. So, I think we can probably string this together somehow and make a real improvement on that corner, which will really go to, really helping out Station Two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Lynx knows, I mean, I helped negotiate the contract when it first got installed with Matt Hart and Bob Wittergren. It always called for that. What's disappointing is there was money set aside and it's gone. So, the idea of that being a pocket park with the flagpole as the centerpiece and now with the new fire station, it just makes a lot of sense. If we have some sidewalks there, there'll be more. And just to go and sit would be nice because that was always the plan.
To address the board, if I can, part of the project for Station Two is to continue that sidewalk from the corner right to the, right to the new station and it will be able to connect to the bank and then to, further to the post office. So, there is a nice connecting sidewalk there. It's not a really large area that the director's talking about, so it really would be a good time to blend that all in. The Highway Department can go out and do a lot of this when they have time. We have, you know, we've got time to be able to do this in conjunction with Station Two. I just think the timing is good to do it and I think it will just really enhance the look of the whole corner.
And Lynx mentioned that they had a pile of loam left over from the high school and I know, having chaired the Building Committee, we insisted that that loam that was stripped from the site stayed in town and be delivered to the Highway Department for simply four projects like this.
Larry?
Oh, Lynx, you're still there, sorry. To be consistent with what I've asked in other projects, even though it's town staff, I would like an estimate of the number of hours involved so we know what the overall expense is. I'm 100% for it. We move ahead and I do think we need to just do the, you know, the fiscal responsible thing, keeping, of tracking what of our expenses.
Michael? And the gentleman behind you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Dr. Hatum of Seventh Old Post Road, Howard. I am 89. We own our home since May 1981. We are U.S. citizens by natural change or by birth. I am a federal retiree of VA Medical Service. At the age of 12, as a pupil at the American Machinery School in my hometown of my native Lebanon, I learned of the Four Freedoms of President Roosevelt in 1941. Freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom from want, and freedom from fear. I lived free from fear until a year ago when neighbors at Three Old Post Road started to burn blazing, sparking fires with flames one to four feet high in a fire pit in the northeast corner of their property, a dozen to two dozen feet from thick layers of dead dry leaves, brush, and branches of oak and pine desiccated by years on the ground, branches with the thickness of a match, matchstick to several inches in section. We got scared and called the fire department on two occasions. The inspector said that the neighbors are within the right as long as the fire pit is 25 feet from a solid structure. Selectmen of Howard, we beg you to restore our right to the freedom from fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
If he leaves some material, we can look at it.
Okay. Would you leave your materials this evening? Go ahead. Oh. Hold on one moment.
I'm not aware of the situation, but I will just tell you that fire pits today are very popular. They are legal, but they also can't be a nuisance. So, if that is a continuing problem, we'll address it. But, people can have fire pits and sometimes on a cool evening, you know, the embers or whatever, it can appear to be more than what it might look to be. Now, there's no excuse for any citizen of this town to be in fear. If that's the case, I will personally take care of the situation.
Thank you, Chief. If you could leave your materials so that we could look at them, if you give them to the town administrator?
He can contact the officer, he can contact Fire Department too in the morning and we do want to grab it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Lynx, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I heard Selectmen Valentine wanted some cost estimate of labor. I wanted to know whether I had some direction, if I'm good to go on?
I would suggest, we haven't had a chance to coordinate. I think if we can rough something out and come back with a plan, I think that may be a little bit better. I know Amy Uwoski from our, you know, had indicated at one point she has a background in it, so maybe she could draw something up and then you could just lay it out. But, we'll give the board a diagram if that's, and then come back on August 6.
Let me suggest.
That would be my suggestion.
I would, I don't want to hold off because of my request. My request is simply a tracking of the hours, you know, the estimate is, so that we know what the overall, yeah, I do that in all projects, so we know what the overall, the outside costs are. And anytime you divert internal, it's an internal cost. But, I would rather, I would move to go ahead with it. I don't want to stop it because it looks like an ongoing project, they're cleaning up.
Yeah, I think that, Michael, go ahead.
I think we should agenda it. You should come back with something because this is weekly briefing. We shouldn't be taking actions in weekly briefing.
Well, okay, that's the point.
Right, so, I think that Chris's idea of coming back with something that we can have.
And if he begins some initial clearing and prepping, I mean, that's not going to be inconsistent with what the site's being done now, so he can go do some of that, I think. But, what the final product is gonna look like should be.
Because Michael's right, I don't want to hold off.
Right, yeah. Okay, so, we'll proceed in that manner, so. Thank you, Lynx.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for weekly briefing? Carolyn?
Thanks, Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. I just wanted to let you and the public know that on August 4th is the Community Yard Sale at Brooks Park and the event that it rains, which it won't, will be inside the community center and the public can buy tables, they're $20. That money goes into the general fund and we sponsor that with the Cranberry Festival. And in the past seven years or so, it's been extremely successful, so I just wanted to let you know. Thanks.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for public comment? Good evening.
Hi, my name is John Ideman. I'm with the Cape Cod Commission. Just having a general announcement to make about the annual One Cape Conference, August 16th and 17th at the Wacoasit. Commission has had this the past couple of years and we touch on the issues of pressing regional significance with municipal officials and stakeholders from all over Cape Cod. I'm here specifically, though, to leave some invitations for the town administrator and for the board for the breakfast on the 17th, the second day of the conference. And that's being put on specifically by the Selectmen and Counselors Association. So, we hope to see everybody here at both days of the conference, but specifically, I think that breakfast is pretty important too, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment? Ed?
Well, John actually stole one of my, God, so, yes, Selectmen's Association, we've been working with the Cape Cod Commission to do a special presentation of issues of housing and economic development provided by Secretary Ash and Christie Senatori, the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission. But, the other thing I just wanted to mention, this is since our last meeting, we, the Cranberry Festival has undertaken a concert series at the Howard Cultural Center, the, in the courtyard. We've had our first two concerts and they've been, by all accounts, of success. The music quality, sound quality is very good in the courtyard. People bring chairs and blankets to sit on and are very comfortable, enjoy the refreshments and the music actually has been exceptional. And we'll be continuing on for five more events through the 23rd of August. This is the next event on Thursday, features a group, Ranny Arbo and Daisy Mayhem, and they're a group that does, well, they do a variety of things, everything from swing to bluegrass to folk. And it's sort of up in the air what they're going to do on any particular performance because they have such a wide repertoire. But, I hope you all during the summer get a chance to come out and enjoy the music. We've, I think, done, our Bob Weiser, our music director, has done an exceptional job of putting together a group of musicians for our entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody else for weekly comment? Public hearing, I mean, why do I join this? Okay, can we get a motion to include the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to present the consent agenda, including a vote to accept the gift of $11,165 from the Oreg Gaylord Aruth Trust, a vote to accept the gift of plantings at the cultural center from Wendy Kristen, a vote to approve application by the Chamber of Commerce for fireworks on September 15th, 2018, and a request by the building director to waive permit fees for new fire station. Second, actually, it occurs to me, the request should be from the building commissioner. And also, there had been a correction on the consent agenda on item B. It was listed that the request had been, came from Erica Skredzpek and that was a mistake.
Thank you, Ed.
Yes, I think it's worthwhile, if I'm correct, explaining item A, the gift to the $11,165 was to the community center, unrestricted funds, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
It's a nice caduce to Carolyn and the respect they show them.
Right, well, it's a wonderful gift that we have.
It's a gift that's now been going on for 17 years and it, quite honestly, the way the trust is set up, will go on for a whole bunch more of the years, so.
Which is great. Okay, so we have a, okay, oh, sorry, Don.
Just a question, this particular gift on B, is that there now or is that going to be there?
Carolyn, do you want to speak to that?
So, yes, Don, thank you for asking. It is already there. She did put it in and said she was unaware of the procedures. That's why I followed up with a letter to you stating the concerns that I have. We love gifts, it's very important, the town appreciates everything that people do. This is just of concern because we haven't really developed that area and if people just go out there and plant and, so, that was my concern, so. It is already out there. She did plant it on her own before getting any approval.
Right, but, go ahead, Don.
I say that, thank you, Carol. This is something through the years that we've wound up with buildings that have been built and then when they're done, people come in and said, "You want to accept this now?" It's a little late then. Really, the board, when it accepts a gift, should be getting that at the front end, that we want to do so-and-so, rather than it's there now or you're gonna accept it, because what are you gonna do, really? Take something out? It's really important to get a consensus in the community that it's something you really want.
Right. Ed, do you have any comments?
No.
Michael?
No.
So, to Don's point, Carolyn has outlined the procedures, the proper procedures going forward and so, obviously, that's the way we'll pursue it. Okay. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public hearings and presentations. Liz Argo, CEVAC, Round One add a request. Is Liz here?
I see her.
Little holdoff?
Yeah, I didn't think that was totally time-sensitive.
No, it's not till the fall, I think she said.
Correct.
And it's not a definite either. She's waiting, I think, on further information. Carol Capola, sample fraud policy. Good evening, Carol.
Hi, good evening. Carol Capola, the Finance Director for the town. As the board is aware and all the department heads and many other folks in the town are aware, we are conducting a risk assessment. We're currently underway and that sets a series of questionnaires to folks and asks for just some input on how do you do things in your department? How do you, how do you maintain your department's assets and how do you keep them safe? But, the most important thing is the tone at the top. So, the Board of Selectmen sets that tone. And to set that tone as a large catch, I guess, of all employees, it's helpful to have a policy in place. And so, I went ahead and wrote a sample policy for your consideration. It's broken down by different sections, like an introduction, why do we need a policy? What's the purpose of the policy? And let's define it. Let's define what's fraud and what's acceptable to the community, what's not acceptable and how are we going to undertake if we find areas that we needed to investigate? How are we going to investigate it and what are we gonna do about it? And so, I would suggest, I have some significant training as a fraud examiner and it's always suggested that you place this document in front of every employee every year, just to remind them, ask them to read it, to go over it with their department head, just to remind them of where the tone is set and how serious you are about fraud and about taking risks. So, this is what I provided for you this evening.
Thank you, Carol. Welcome. Larry, you have any questions?
Thank you, Carol. I agree, we need a policy, it should be up front. I have a couple of general questions and I don't, I particularly have a bias, I'm throwing them out here. Mostly, I have a bias when I have a question. But, one is when you, the statements you report to the town administrator or someone, through the years, we've talked about the benefits of having someone reporting in at the outside of the town staff, so people feel comfortable they're not, I know you clearly stated, you know, no one can be held accountable for it. So, I want to throw that as an idea for discussion, if I don't know how the rest of the board and Carol, you and Chris talks. I don't want another bureaucracy, but that's been an issue we've discussed at some time. I'd like to have that be part of our discussion before we move ahead. The other question I have is one of confidentiality. I think maybe that could be tightened up in this document. And then, at some point, anytime you list actions, we need some timeline and accountability for those actions in here. That'd be my three, you know, general points, but great, great effort getting this and I appreciate you getting us started on this.
Michael?
I have nothing. Great work.
Ed?
No, but, fine.
Okay. Don?
Mine's a general comment too. Through my experience, the federal government is, most of these things present an exposure to risk when you reduce down the decision-making process, it's one person, say, or, I know in private industry, you strive for efficiency, but in government, there's probably an important issue to make sure that a chain's broken somewhere, where the person asking for work to be done isn't the same person who's ordering the work, isn't the same person who's approving the work. And we've taken some steps. I just want to point out that I consider this to be consistent with the policy that in contracting, that we're not going to be
in contracting, that we're not going to be approving things unless we see that they've been signed off by relevant areas, so that a number of eyes have been on things. And I think that's important, to be able to, you know, present to the public that we're not just widely going along approving things, that we have more than one person involved in the process.
Chris?
I just wanted to say in practice, I mean, obviously I've been a town administrator for more than a decade, and I think to Larry's point, what I've seen in my experience is most cases probably do come to the administrator. And then in my experience, I have farmed somehow to the police. If it's theft over $250, then that's almost a guarantee to farm that directly to the police, because that's now a different criminal activity. And then just if you wanted to have in the policy, have people be able to go directly to the town attorney. In this case, KP Law is a separate entity outside of the town. So if there were, you know, concerns in regards to activity of, you know, administration or something at the higher levels, you have that recourse. And I think something like that, they'd probably put in there, but I don't know if I necessarily...
I would give you some type of escape hatch, so there's a way to get out of it if people are uncomfortable with me, by.
But just to make sure people, I mean, in the time I've been here, and even I've probably done, probably over the years, at least 10 or 15 investigations on my own, there is a value to having some of them done internally, because now you're not incurring the cost. And I think in those cases, in those cases, they haven't come back later on to then resurface again. So I think, and actually even this, this board is aware, when we had the issue on the cemetery, you know, I farmed that out to Bob Lawton. I didn't have any problem at all farming it out to someone to take a look. So we do take a different approach depending upon the nature of the issues.
Yeah, and Carol, I think it's a, it's a great job, and I think that ultimately, to Don's point, is that, you know, as we continue to comb through and try to make sure that we've got all our checks and balances, this is another piece of that, that we need to be aware of, and we need to understand where we're lacking and where we can tighten things up. So I think it's very helpful, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So if this is considered the first reading, will we put it back on for the August 6th meeting?
I would, and I would just ask a couple of minor tweaks. I just, I don't know how you word it, but sometimes the escape if someone, I'd like to see that in there.
Okay, so...
Well, I could see a situation, 99% I think have worked through as written, but I'd like an escape if someone's really uncomfortable with that.
Yeah, I think something to the...
There's some languages, you know, I don't know how you do that, but...
Something to the effect, if allegation is made against the administrator or the Finance Director, that maybe it starts with the town attorney.
Yeah, okay.
Because that is an outside entity.
Yeah.
So we can, we'll tweak it that way and bring it back.
Right.
Thank you, Carol. Committee appointments, Community Preservation Committee, do you and want to take, yeah, go ahead.
Richard's here. As far as we know, I mean, before we do anything, it's going to mess things up again. The Council on Aging had a full slate at nine at one point, then it went to seven. From what I gather, there was some concern, there were eight people sitting in those seven seats. On the way up tonight, I spoke to Anita, and I would really rather not act on four in the Council on Aging until we can absolutely guarantee that we're not going to be appointing an overage again.
Madam Chair, Richard Weistec, Chair of the Council on Aging. Yes, originally it was seven, it somehow got to nine, and we changed it again at town meeting this year, back to seven. What I would like you to consider, whether you would gender it at another time, Madam Chair, is that the two people who have been coming, rather than demoting or throwing them off, is that we assign alternate members, so that when we need someone to come in, there has been a little bit of turnover at times at the Council on Aging, that we have two alternate members available. So whether you need to do that another time, we'd be happy to agenda it and discuss that with you.
Okay. Are you happy with that? You're okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if it becomes pervasive, though, it would be, you know, the charter calls for the Chair of the Committee to get in contact first with the interview committee, determine whether they vacate the position. You're not saying that now, I recognize.
There was a change in policy this year in how people were appointed. When letters came out, letters stated for reappointment that if you have interest in me staying on a committee, you were to not contact the Selectmen's Office. And we had a case where someone misinterpreted the letter that came out stating that they should contact the Selectmen's Office. And someone who thought they were being reappointed was actually not reappointed. So there was a mix-up in communication. It's a new process, I know that was changed last year, and it was just not read carefully enough, and so it's caused this situation to occur. Happy to work any way is necessary through you and through the Charter, but we currently have seven people, would love to appoint at least one, if not two, as alternates.
Okay, no problem. We'll bring that one back.
There's, there's eight chairs up front here, if anyone wants to sit. There's a bunch of chairs in the front row.
Bylaw Charter Review Committee.
Don's going to make the motion.
Yeah, let me get the...
Do you have any comments on the Bylaw Charter Review? Any tweaks or...
That's not part of this yet, is it?
Do you want your committee appointments?
Yeah. First we do, I mean, I could make the motion.
Make the motion.
To make the, yeah.
In with this, yeah. Let's see here. The motion would be to appoint Chris Rocket to the Community Preservation Committee as the Selectmen's Appointee with a term to expire 2019. Tina Games to the Bylaw Charter Review Committee as a full member for a term to expire 2020. Craig Chatwick to the Planning Board for a full term to expire 2019. Justin White we're holding off on, that would be the person who might tip the balance on the COA. We're going to hold off on David Rogers, Joseph McParland Jr. for Housing Committee for a full term to expire 2021. And Kathy Green to the, as the ex officio member of the CPC from Open Space Committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2019.
I'll second that.
You don't need to take action on Kathy Green.
Yes, you do. Since there's some misunderstanding even at this table, I just want to point out, the process for ex officios, which were not in the Charter originally when it was written, is that people are voted by the Committee as a recommendation, as a nomination. They are confirmed through the Board of Selectmen, so we do have to vote them, because if they're not automatic, we could choose, and we have chosen in the past, to ask for another selection from that Committee for various reasons. But it's a confirmation process, nominate, confirm.
My only concern was a letter came through that said Real Estate and Open Space nominated someone to go on to CPC, as if it was already completed. And last year, we definitely made a determination that those requests come to the Board of Selectmen, and the Selectmen make the confirmation of who they want to have on that from the applicable Committee.
Right.
So I just, it's under new business because it was...
A couple of people have actually tried to take the express route to get sworn in based on the letter of the vote from their Committee, but just to remind everybody, that's a nomination. The interview Committee would interview them and then recommend them to the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen would either vote them or not vote them, as a confirmation. So it's pretty straightforward, but it's not that they just vote and they show up and get sworn in.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
New business, confirm Susan Keith as Council on Aging Social Service Coordinator pursuant to offer letter. Chris, do, oh, did you have something, Don?
We do have Judy Wilson in the, in the crowd, if she doesn't mind coming up, just to kind of do, we have had a departure, due to retirement of Kevin Grunwall, who served very well in his capacity, but everyone at some point gets a chance to retire and move on. So Kevin has availed himself of that. He has agreed to kind of come back and help, and we have gone through, Judy, and I want to give Judy the opportunity, because she did the lion's share of the work, did the recruitment, and has recommended to me that Susan Keith be his replacement as the Social Services Coordinator. And we did put the offer letter in the package, and that is my recommended appointment, subject to confirmation by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Good evening, Judy.
Hi. So, we've known for quite a long time that Kevin wanted to retire. We did ask him to stay. We tried to work out some capacity where he could stay, but he really had other things in mind for the season of his life. We didn't have lots of applicants, but the applicants that we had were very good, and so I interviewed everybody. I think that the candidate that I recommended be hired, her name is Susannah Keith. She actually grew up on the Cape, spent time working in Maine, and moved back here a couple of years ago. She actually is a Harwich resident. She has extensive experience working with older adults, primarily in a long-term care setting, but she also has some experience as a case manager and a family educator. All of those things would be helpful for her as experience goes. She has a pretty keen awareness of aging issues and working with older adults. She has a real good knowledge of clinical standards for working with people, and that's really important in the line of work that we do in terms of confidentiality and just kind of clinical standards of working with, with individuals. She has exceptional judgment, I think, in the handling of problems and sensitive issues in the process of interviewing. Everybody was given a written assessment as well, to kind of determine what their knowledge of resources was, how they would handle certain situations, and she was spot on in her assessment in that way. Her references described her as even-tempered, with a gentle disposition, somebody who was empathetic, reliable, hardworking, and really good at working with families. And all of those skills are really important to the job. I just, I'm confident that she's the right person for the job, and I think not only is she bringing with her the skills, knowledge, and abilities she needs, I think she's going to fit well into our team and be an asset to the COA.
That's great. Richard, did you have a comment?
Just if I can. Couple members of the Council on Aging are here tonight, how important this position is. And Director Wilson was, was very strongly in this particular candidate. The position of the social worker in this position that's being appointed tonight is so important to our senior community. Kevin's last day was a week ago, and members of the Public Safety came to his last day to say goodbye, because of the interaction that we have between our Council on Aging staff and our Public Safety staff. These are some of our most vulnerable citizens that we're dealing with. In this job, that particular position is so imperative to the work that's being done in the Council on Aging. So we're here tonight to support our Director and to support this appointment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any comment, Don?
Unfortunately, it's going to be as exciting as reading a chapter of the dictionary, but I have to start with this, but try to delineate the differences here. Chris, you actually have the appointment authority on an employee at that level. The Board of Selectmen would have to make a motion to not appoint the person, and it would take a super majority of four or five Selectmen to overturn that. That being said, there are certain people who are direct hires of the Board, like the Police Chief, Fire Chief, the Town Administrator. There are people who are Department Heads who do require an affirmative three-vote of the Board to be able to be confirmed as a selection. My interest in the past, over the past year and a half, has been, there's no way to exercise any of this authority, though, unless you do have the information pertaining to how you got here. At that point, you could make up your mind whether you do or don't want to make a motion, but I would argue unless somebody feels really strongly, there's no motion that needs to be made for this, because the Town Administrator has that authority, unless somebody wants to go for a four-fifths vote.
No, except to say that, Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, I think Don's right in the reading of the Charter. In the time that I've been the Administrator, instead of hiring somebody and then letting them dangle for two weeks, if you would, if the Board decides they don't want, I think it's better, or my recommendation is to do it in an affirmative way. So if, if the, I have been asking in my time here, that if the Board is okay with the candidate, that we do an affirmative vote, and then that basically takes away the two-week, the two-week element, the two-week delay, really just as peace of mind for the candidate, so they can depart their current organization and then come to ours without that waiting two weeks.
Well, that's been, that has been what we've done in the past. We have had, you know, conservation, we've had different appointments.
You don't need to, but...
I mean, we don't officially need to...
But I'd be willing to make a motion to confirm the selection.
And I can, I move reaffirm the appointment recommended by our Town Administrator to hire Susan Keith as a Social Services Coordinator for the Town Harwich Council on Aging.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, wastewater presentation by David Young, Dennis Harwich-Yarmouth, DHY, Process and Schedule. Good evening, David, whatever way you prefer. Good evening.
David Young with CDM Smith, your wastewater consultant. You were asked me to come in and give you an update on four or five topics tonight, so, first topic is the status of the discussions on the clean, DHY, Clean Waters Community Partnership between Dennis Harwich and Yarmouth. To refresh everyone's memory, at town meeting this past May, you had a article which passed, I believe unanimously, to file special legislation with the state legislature. There's been drafts of that circulated to all three town boards to review. Town Council from all three towns has also reviewed that document. It was modeled after the Mansfield, Foxborough, Norton special legislation. And what that legislation does is just give you the opportunity to create a community partnership slash district under mass general law. Ultimately, as you recall, that legislation and the town meeting article that was passed will require any agreement, should it be put forth after discussions amongst the three towns, to come back and be approved by your Board and ultimately town meeting. So that's where all the details are. This filing of special legislation, again, is really just to create, allow for the creation of a district. The town of Yarmouth, on behalf of the three towns of Dennis Harwich and Yarmouth, received a state grant through the Energy and Regionalizations Program, and that money is being used to help facilitate the discussions that are ongoing. You have two representatives who have been attending those meetings, Selectman Valentine and Chris Clark. And we have put together a memo, which I believe is in your packet, that outline the timeframe for those discussions. It's to cause for filing the special legislation now, since you've already done the town meeting article in May. Then to have a draft agreement available for your review this late fall, most likely. Discuss that agreement, get feedback from you and all three towns, hold another community meeting like we had back in March, to get input from all three towns on that agreement as well. And then ultimately, make whatever revisions are required, but should the towns decide to move forward with that, then you would put a town meeting article on for next May's annual town meeting. And that coincides with the grant timeline, where the grant from the state needs to be expended by next June, so. Don't know if you've had a chance to read in detail the special legislation, if you have any questions on it, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just by way of, this is a little bit different, as the Board will recall, when we signed a intermunicipal agreement with Chatham, under the law, you could do an intermunicipal agreement, so that element was something that the Board of Selectmen had authority to do. Here, because we're creating a partnership, it does require that this go to the legislature for the creation of the entity itself. So what this language really does is to just authorize the creation of the body and the body politic of what that agency can, can in fact do. I would recommend on this, we did find out on Friday, that House Counsel is still in the process of reviewing this, and that once House Counsel is done, as you noticed, I think it was the last meeting, they made some changes, and we had to vote the changes on some very small special legislation regarding the assessors. So it probably would make sense to get that special legislation signed off by House Counsel, and then maybe put it on the consent agenda if people are comfortable with the language and... if people are comfortable with the language, and Dave is certainly here to address any question in regards to the boilerplate. I think the more significant work over the next three months is to be able to put together the full agreement like we did with the Chatham IMA, which really gets into the nuts and bolts of how the three towns will actually partner up.
Okay, so, does anyone have any questions? Larry?
All of the others first, because I've been, I've been involved with it, so.
Okay. Ed?
Hello?
Don?
This is actually, to address the town administrator's last comment. I would urge you not to be on the consent agenda because things that are important should not be lobbed together, and I would suspect that something that's going to cost tens of millions of dollars ultimately shouldn't be done the fastest way possible.
Okay, in terms of the timeframe, though, in having House Counsel review, and then we want to have sufficient time to have another meeting.
Yeah, just to elaborate a little more on the timeframe, we had a meeting last Friday at the regularly scheduled meetings with the local state representatives, and Senator Seer was there. Actually, Secretary of Economics and Housing was there as well, Jay Ash, to come down and talk about potential grant programs going forward under a partnership-type format. But the representatives, again, indicated it's with Special Legislative Council now. Hopefully, there's only a few tweaks that they're looking to do, so the version that you have in front of you should be ninety-five-plus percent what it's going to be. But he said there's really one determining time factor in the timeline right now. If it requires a legislative roll call, it probably will not be filed by July thirty-first, and therefore, because they know they wouldn't get a roll call between now and when they leave session. So, the legislation actually wouldn't be acted upon till probably next February. If it doesn't require a roll call, which I don't believe the MFN one did, then they can file it and just get a vote from the legislature this fall. So, it would be enacted in the next few months.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to add to what Dave and Chris said, that, you know, the reason we're going into this is to save money. You know, get to the bottom line. We can work together and share one facility amongst three towns. And obviously, it's a saving. It doesn't save us on the collection systems, but that's what all the three towns are working on. We, you know, it's an expensive project. I do agree with what Don said, which I hate to, I guess, hate to agree probably, but I do think that we need to have a careful discussion of the special legislation package as we go forward. It's fairly straightforward because we've, we, Dave Young and CDM Smith have used a format from another three towns that's been approved before. But the language can be a little scary to residents unless they understand it. And so, we're going to need some time to explain it as we go forward, because it's just to throw it out there. I could, I could pick out some sentences myself that I'm going to say, whoa. So, we need to explain it, get behind it, and be sure people understand the benefits, so. I would like to schedule at least one discussion and not to belabor it, but maybe we need a couple of discussions in this format and within the Wastewater Support Committee, for instance, that this gets a good airing, so that when it comes to town meeting, we hope next spring, there'll be an understanding of where we're going on this.
Right, I think that's a good idea. I also have a question in terms of have, do we have any preliminary info on the website yet on the agreement?
All the minutes of the meeting are being posted on your website from the D-H-Y meetings, yeah.
And we can put this on, obviously, afternoon.
Don?
Yeah, but to Larry's point, I understand that, you know, the government geeky stuff is, okay, they're on, the minutes are on the site, and we're doing this all the right way. I'm just saying that I would sooner see us be in a position where we explain this, people are actually behind it because they want to be behind it, and we're not finding ourselves a month before town meeting explaining why we've already approved something that you should love. Everybody really needs to have a grasp of it, and everybody, it's a lot of money. And it's a wise thing to do, but it's a lot of money, and people need to understand this without fear about why they would want to support this, and it's worth the time upfront to have these discussions instead of having some infomercials later on right before town meeting.
Right, well, I think we can address that in a couple of different manners, so I think that that's important. I think we're all pretty much in agreement that we need to educate. It's really just a, it's a reiteration of what we had to do last year and the year before in terms of getting the word out. So, between having it on our agenda maybe a couple more times and putting it on the website and maybe an article, you know, if we could, the more we can communicate and educate, obviously, we've learned, the better off we are. I would agree. We don't want to do any of this at the last minute.
I just, there's going to be two points of education, and certainly, I was planning on going to the Wastewater Support Committee. I think it's this Thursday night is their meeting, so I was planning on attending that and certainly can bring this with me. But this is really the legislative approval that allows for the entity to be formed, and then there'll be a second education of the real details of how it's all going to actually work. So, you know, just so people at home understand, there'll be two elements, one, creating the body, and then the second would be how it actually functions at work and what's the role of Harwich in that.
Right, okay.
Yeah, this is really just implementing the step the town meeting authorized you to take. Be happy to come back and have discussions as we develop the agreement, by all means.
Great, thank you, David.
One of the things, well, just before we leave that, I think Chris alluded to it. The state representatives, before they formally file, will be looking for a positive statement action from each of the three boards authorizing the state reps to file. So, I don't know whether you want to take a vote tonight, realizing that this isn't the final version that the Legislative Council is going to put forth, and just make a contingent on your subgroup representatives reviewing the final, which is probably going to have edits, or if you want to bring it back, the final, final version. That's up to you.
Oh, how does the Board, Larry, how do you feel? You've been attending.
Well, there's going to be minor tweaks, and David is right. They made a real strong point that it's not going, nothing apparently goes through the State House unless there's support from the communities, and so they're asking for, I think of, we move, and I'd move that we support moving forward with this special legislation. As, and we can, contingent on the, well, I don't, I don't think I might want to make a contingent, because, you know, this just sets, this sets the playground going forward.
Right.
But I'd move with support moving forward with this special legislation.
When would, when would we see the actual language that we're saying we're supporting?
Well, depends on the.
Special councils reviewing it now, the representatives didn't know when they would do it because July thirty-first is their end of formal session, so they've got a lot of things on their plate right now. The key issue is whether this legislation will require a roll call vote or not. That's the deciding factor.
So, if we make a motion, amend the motion to include the revisions prior to, right, that?
I'd like to see them, yeah. I mean, the public would like to see them.
Ed?
The problem I have with that is, is that it gets all of our bailiwick in that we're seeing how it go through the State House, what their timing is. And I think our support's more general, that we support moving forward, maybe even not in this specific language, but we support the D-H-Y agreement and the supporting legislation.
But if we're having council review and we're looking to then move forward with it, we just want to know that.
Yeah, if the motion were to just generally support the move to the legislature, I'd be in favor of that, but I really, my caution is, throughout a lot of this process, it's the right thing to do, but nobody actually knew what that right thing was. They kept authorizing the Board of Selectmen to do the right thing, and they found out about it after, largely after things had been done. I'm just advocating to make sure that the public is along for the ride.
Ed?
Yeah, well, you know, I don't, I think, obviously, the intent of moving forward with the two other towns is great. You know, the item on tonight's agenda was sort of an update on the process and schedule of when we'd be, when things would be moving forward, but, you know, we really haven't had a presentation of what's actually in this document. You know, the item before it in our packet sort of laid out the schedule, and I figured this was just thrown in and wasn't going to be discussed, you know. As we've all said, you know, you read through things, and there's sort of, some of the language is like, well, what the hell does that mean? And I'd like to have a chance at maybe our next meeting to go through it and be able to raise those issues and get that understanding before I vote to go ahead with it.
So, maybe what we should do is put it back on.
Put it back on, my, based on our discussion, I would, I might actually go the other way and put it, not next meeting, but the meeting after that, because I'm not sure, we never clear how timely the legal response, even though we're working on it now, I want to be on the agenda what's going to be, what's going to be there.
Well, we also don't want to miss an opportunity for the moves. Go ahead.
But haven't we gone on record as supporting this?
We have.
We did.
Isn't this kind of from the office of redundancy, then? I mean, unless we have some new language that we're specifically adopting, we are on record, we took a vote in a joint meeting of three boards of selectmen to support this.
Yes, you voted in that, at that meeting, you voted to support filing an article at town meeting to then file special legislation. This would be to say, I've looked at the special legislation as currently drafted and support filing that.
But the legislation that we haven't read.
Well, we did read the legislation. It's that it's been tweaked.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I know, but we.
The legislation you have in your packet is the legislation that was sent to the special council, the legal folks at the legislature to see if that is acceptable to actually file.
So, just to be clear, we voted to support it. This is part two of our process, so, go ahead, Ed.
When was this, this legislation, the current draft of it done? When was it written?
There's been different versions of it floating around for a few weeks, so I don't know when it's been passed to you folks.
But when the, when the folks voted collectively go to town meeting with an article, this special legislation didn't exist.
Right, no, that article was to file special legislation. It didn't exist at the time.
This is the first time we're seeing it, essentially.
That's fine.
So, you know, and I'd like a formal presentation of it before voting on it.
Put it on for August six.
Yeah, let's put it on.
We may get House Counsel's, you know, copies and edits, and I think that would be worthwhile.
Stuff that happens after that.
Right, and if you don't have it on August sixth, then we can bring it back again, so I think that's probably the best bet.
Okay. The next item is to, and this is first time you're probably seeing this, and so this is just to give you an overview, and then we'll come back and get into more detailed discussion at a later date. But this is something that the town will need to have in its October fifteenth, or it would be nice to have in its October fifteenth packet, to the Department of Environmental Protection, which is for your final application for the state revolving fund for your wastewater program. And this is to try to get you to qualify for zero-interest loans. It's nothing here tonight, and I'm not here to tell you you're getting a zero-interest loan. I'm trying to get you to be able to qualify for a zero-interest loan. And there are five criteria on there, which this is one. And what this is, is some people in the past have referred to it as flow neutrality regulations and what have you. The current language that's been approved at the DEP level is to call it land use controls. And you may have heard me say, when you were developing your comprehensive wastewater management plan and looking at the flows from different watersheds and doing, quote, "the build-out analysis", that we needed to manage to those flows that were being adopted and the flows that were put forth in your approved comprehensive wastewater management plan. So, this is a first draft to you. It's been reviewed by town staff. Again, it's modeled after three, four other communities that we've worked with where it's been approved, and they got a portion of their project zero percent, the rest was two percent. So, they did meet those criteria. And again, what this does is it lays out a framework using what's presented in your comprehensive wastewater management plan to manage the flow by what we defined as eight sewer service areas, working around your watersheds, which are defined in figures in the comprehensive wastewater management plan. And then, three other areas that were, so it's the five watersheds and then three other areas, the campground, the Route twenty-eight area, and I forget the other one. Oh, the Six Ponds area, or the Great San Alex area, excuse me. So, this lays out, and the reason Chris and I wanted to bring this up is, you know, there's been a couple people who have been calling the town saying, how do I get into Phase Two out in East Harwich? They're outside the area that was defined, so that starts, will trigger, you know, how do you manage to that flow? How do you allow someone in? How would you move flow outside that area if you wanted to? This lays out a framework for you to consider adopting that would manage that flow. So, what we've done is put together a table in here that shows you the flows that are presented in the comprehensive wastewater management plan by those eight areas, shows you the outline in the figure from, again, your approved CWRMP that shows those eight areas. And then it gives you a framework for some instances that's put on page two under the wastewater flow management. And just to pick a couple of those out is if someone, if you wanted to reallocate flow from one of those areas to another sewer service area, what would you need to do? And under this policy, without exceeding the overall flow, you would be able to move that flow from one area to another with the board vote of the Board of Selectmen. If you wanted to move flow outside of another area or bring an area into something, it becomes more difficult to do that. And as it's outlined here, there were two instances. If it's a non-public health issue request, then first it requires a unanimous vote, not just a majority vote, a unanimous vote of the Board of Selectmen, and then it requires a town meeting vote. So, it's a higher level of approval to make sure the town really wants to do that and manage that flow, whether you're increasing your flow or you're taking flow from one of the other areas if you're outside the areas. If it's for public health issues, then it's a unanimous vote of the Board of Selectmen and a recommendation from the Board of Health. So, there, because it tends to be more of an emergency-type issue, and, you know, it's not some development that you're trying to incorporate that just came along or is being proposed. So, I would encourage you to read through these, see if it makes sense to you. Again, this is being modeled after four other communities that we've worked with, that it's gone to the state, it's been approved. We've worked with town staff to discuss it. We've tried to incorporate the wording for who's in control of what, based on what you're proposing for your charter, so we need to make sure we get that correct, such as just under, you know, background, it's connections and extension permits are issued by the Board of Health in accordance with Board of Harwich Selectmen policies, working in conjunction with the Water and Sewer Commissioners, because you're all in control of different timeframes. You know, you're taking design up through water flowing in the pipe, and then the Water and Sewer Commissioners down the road are envisioned to take over the operations end, so we've tried to incorporate that wording. We need to make sure we've got it straight.
And just to that end, at town meeting, there was some concern that was raised by the Water Commission. I think that the two boards had reached agreement. In the drafting of the language, the attorney may have been a little bit verbose, and he put in there that the administrator is supposed to do the procurement, is supposed to review those contracts, which is part of the Charter. And one could read that, that it appeared that all actions of the Water, Wastewater Board would have to go through the administrator. So, we have had, staff-wise, a internal meeting just to discuss with the attorney what makes the most sense. what makes the most sense. Uh, the language already exists that the administrator is the chief procurement officer that does contracts, so we don't need the language in that. So, uh, we did agree to kind of take the language out. Uh, Dan Pelletier, the water wastewater superintendent, will present that to his board and then bring it back. But I think it's a fairly straightforward, uh, for the board, so what was presented last year, uh, really is still intact, and just that one nuanced element that's really not needed was, was removed. So once we get a, a vote of the, uh, Water Commission, we'll bring that back to the selectmen for your, uh, consideration.
And just one question in terms of, uh, when we're looking at these flows and we're, we're dealing with, you know, the second phase, but technically our first sewer, um, and we're talking about East Harwich, and we all need to familiarize ourselves more with this document, so I understand that. But when we're calculating flow, are we also making sure that, so let's just, I'm just throwing out a number, forty-five thousand in one particular area, right? And we have a restricted amount that we can send to Chatham. In, in addition to that, if we've removed properties via, you know, purchases we've made for conservation reasons, et cetera, we're not, we're not going back and adding that back in, right? That, like, those areas, we've removed them from the rolls in order to not have that additional flow.
Yes, so that's a perfect example of if you had that, say you remove, you purchased enough lots that removed five thousand gallons of potential flow that had been accounted for. That's a perfect example of, um, say another development came along, or you wanted to encourage development in another watershed, you could move that five thousand gallons from the East Harwich watershed, Pleasant Bay watershed, over to the one that you wanted to do through the policies that are laid out in this management plan.
Right, so if they were in a different location, that would work.
Yeah, so you're managing to your upper limit.
Yeah, okay.
But I think to the, to the question, that's for going from one watershed to another.
Right.
And if we have an existing watershed, where we have an IMA with Chatham that goes up to three hundred thousand, if four or five properties that we anticipated would be developed that went to conservation, then that becomes part of the existing flow that we have available for the Chatham.
Yes.
So that element, whatever, whatever parcels have been identified in the maps are the ones that we are planning on searing, and those are the ones that are relevant to the, to the flow. If those parcels change and we have additional capacity, then there has to be a process in which we would use to move that capacity within the individual watershed, but not go over that amount.
And so as we, as we see developments come about, for instance, on, off of Route thirty-nine, we've got two new developments, those parcels have been factored into that flow?
Yeah, right now, anything as of July one of sixteen, sixteen?
Twenty sixteen.
That it was authorized for that parcel would continue to be what's authorized for that parcel.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that?
Not right at this moment.
So again, just to reiterate the timeline, um, it would be good if we were able to incorporate this plan in the packet that goes in the middle of October, um, so sometime between now and then, be happy to come back and be able to explain more and answer your questions once you've had a chance to look at it.
Okay.
But we would need to have you adopt it and then send it into DEP, and, uh, I think it's the Office of, uh, Economic Development as well, uh, that oversees the actual wording that gets put forth, so there's a couple week turnaround on that, too.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Larry, Ed, Don?
I, I think it's important to say, it's not necessarily addressed to you, uh, but it is to this table and to the town in general. Uh, we have a charter right now, and it was no small matter, uh, last year, uh, at town meeting, because the current, uh, text in the charter calls for the town administrator to be responsible for purchasing the services, uh, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, except we're delegated, excepting for those, uh, for the water department and Brooks Free Library. I mean, we have not actually carved out, uh, and we need to, I mean, have a discussion with, because we got this hybrid that we're working with right now, that's a water slash wastewater department, uh, that has to be delineated. So, we have to come to an agreement, and that shouldn't be in April, I mean, it should be like now that we start discussing who it is that's going to have, you know, contract authority, because it's not as simple as it was just portrayed, it's, it's more complicated, which is why they felt compelled to stand up.
Okay, we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the next item, um, is listed as, uh, the test boring program and locations. Uh, if I could maybe expand that a little bit and give you an overview of the program just briefly, trying to be cognizant of time here. Um, but the overall wastewater program is on schedule, uh, I believe schedule was in your packets, it's the same schedule that is posted on the town's website for the program. Um, so we're feverishly working on developing the drawings, they're probably around sixty percent now. Our goal is to have ninety plus percent design documents to submit in that October fifteenth package that has to be submitted, uh, to the DEP. Uh, regarding the, uh, boring, it's part of the program, DEP requires a boring every so many feet, uh, so there's well over two hundred boring that will be taken over the next several weeks. Uh, there's a little bit of a delay, uh, it's on the website, we need to get that updated, um, that it was gonna start today. Uh, the boring contractor has been delayed a little bit, and it'll actually start next Tuesday, the thirty-first. Uh, but the map showing where the boring's are located and the street addresses are all posted on the website, so, um, and no work will be done on, uh, thirty-nine or Route one thirty-seven until after Labor Day. So it'll be between now and probably the middle of September that those boring's will be occurring out there.
Go ahead, Ma'am.
Uh, David, could you expand just a little bit, give people an idea of what, what's a boring? Is it, you know, piles of stuff, or is it a small thing?
Right, no, I'm using the term boring and, uh, it's common to me, uh, but not to all. Uh, what that means is that there will be a, uh, large truck parked out on the road, uh, and it has a auger on the back of it, and they will actually auger a four inch diameter hole down to a depth that is one and a half times the depth of the proposed pipe depth at that location. Uh, and we're looking for soils to see if there are any soils that we'd need to address, such as fine peats or clays or those types of things, and to see if, uh, we hit the water table in any of those locations, so we'd know whether they're de-watering requirements or when the pipes go in the ground.
Thank you.
Uh, and there will be police details out there with most of those, um, and that's all been coordinated, uh, in many of those locations. Uh, we've also continued, uh, meeting regularly with, uh, Chris Clark, Dan Pelletier, Megan Eldridge, uh, sometimes others on just coordinating locations in the design, uh, looking at the, uh, proposed pumping station locations. I know Chris has been out to meet with some of the property owners. Uh, we're in the process of now, uh, developing some typical site plans for those lots and some potential renderings, so that those landowners who have been positive, um, will have a better idea of what they're actually would be looking at, uh, moving forward. And we've had regular, uh, monthly meetings with, um, Chatham and their consultant regarding the, uh, pumping station and the connections and the bidding of all those things. So again, as I indicated, uh, project is on schedule, um, big deliverable due October fifteenth, uh, then we would be fine tuning everything at that point, uh, with anticipation of bidding two contracts next February, March timeframe, um, and Chatham will be bidding their contract in a similar timeframe. We're trying to figure out the best sequence to get best bid prices for the two communities, uh, with construction likely starting, um, probably sometime next May, sometime in that timeframe. And that's, again, uh, all in sync with what's been presented in the schedule that you folks have and, and is on the, uh, town website, so.
So, go ahead, Ed.
If construction begins next May, when would the system be at a point where, uh, folks would be hooking up to it?
Uh, we're envisioning, um, a two-year construction period, so we've always been indicating that connections would probably be occurring in twenty twenty-one, late spring twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Because we're not allowing any construction on, um, one thirty-seven or thirty-nine between Memorial Day and Labor Day, we're allowing them to work in the residential side streets, but, so that's, that's why we're envisioning a two-year timeframe.
Yep.
Chris, did you?
Yeah, just, uh, a couple things I do want to address to the, the next item on the potential vendors, uh, but they're, just so people are aware, there's six pump stations that we have to meet with people, I've met with all six now, uh, actually pretty favorably received, people are very, very much willing to kind of work with us to put the pump stations in. There's also two cross-country runs at some of the, uh, the corporate areas in town, the Stop and Shop and four hundred East Plaza, that was, uh, again, very well received, uh, and then there's fifteen private, private ways that we are having research done on the, uh, legal ability. We have water in most of these, we're checking the legal ability for us to extend that to other utilities, including sewer. So that work is, is very much underway, as, as David indicated. In terms of, um, I have been meeting with a fair amount of people, I know Megan and, uh, Dan Pelletier have also been meeting with people, and I just want to make sure that we kind of make it crystal clear that, that the intent of the, the town right now, available on our website and available in the office, is a list of Title V companies, registered sanitarians and engineers that can do this type of work. I know there's been some material going out there, uh, that is using some town documentation, uh, but we cannot recommend one vendor, uh, individually, uh, so we do have a list, actually there's numerous, uh, people on the list that currently design out systems for septics, uh, for individual homeowners, we have the engineers and registered sanitarians, and then we also have on the list, uh, septic installers. And as the board will recall, the, the town of Chatham has a licensed utility installer, uh, process that they use, uh, we will open that up through the Board of Health, most likely, and the, uh, in the water department. And then some, I would imagine some or most of these septic installers will probably qualify to be able to put the pipes in the ground, too. So we do have these lists available for folks that want to do some preliminary planning, uh, to kind of look and, and get a sense. So we can endorse any one company, but we certainly do have available resources for companies that have done business with the town of Harwich.
Don?
Yeah, I'd like to actually combine Ed's comment with the town administrator's comment, because I know some people, uh, an engineering company's been sending out stuff, uh, to people right now. Everybody should remember what, uh, the answer to Ed's question was, which is two years. Uh, so it's not like everybody's gonna run out and, and get an installer right now. And I'd go one step further, we don't have that mechanism set up yet, so we don't have the approved contractor. I'm sure they're a fine company, and they should be looked into along with others, but the town does not have any approved contractor for hookups right now, and they're two years away in any event, so no one should panic that, uh, I better go to this seminar next week because I'm going to miss out on getting my installation done.
Yes.
Does anybody else want to comment?
Uh, yes, my name's Carrie. Chris, a question directed toward you, you imply that, you've given us, uh, a list of, uh, septic installer, you know, vendors and engineers, you've implied that coming, uh, fairly soon will be a list of licensed installers that people can begin to talk to.
Once the Board of Health establishes a process for licensed utility installers, these would be people that would have similar.
And the schedule on that is next month, next, uh?
Megan's in the crowd, uh, she would have probably a better sense for that.
Since we're probably three years away from doing any installations, I, I can say we're probably a year or two away from licensing any utility installers at this point.
Uh, thank you, Megan. That, that's been a, uh, let, let me just comment, though, that that's, that's been a concern, at least in my neighborhood, and I think in other neighborhoods, that, uh, even though we're two or three years away from, uh, installing, there's a lot of concern of, of knowing who to talk to, actually, right now, so they can start planning, of, you know, they're doing, uh, new decks, they're new landscaping, and so I would like to push that forward, so there's someone they can talk to. I, I take the point that, that nothing's gonna happen, but that doesn't, uh, help the comfort level of people that are being sewered on how to plan their next move, and that comes back to me all the time.
I, I agree with Larry on that, because, you know, I, I'm slated to be, you know, sewer, Larry is, and, you know, really, at this point, um, and I'm sure many other people probably feel the exact same way Larry just described, which is, first of all, once you have that sewer design, so, so pretty much by October, people can say, this is what it is, and they can take that and meet with an engineer and say, okay, what's the best way for me to connect? So that's step one, is we all want to know what's the best way, the cheapest way, the most direct route. So then you have that, and then you have, like, for instance, any work you want to do to your yard, so for me, I've just said, forget the right side for the next year or two, because what's the point? But to that point, the more I know, the more I know I can do prior to sewer, and what I can do and plan in the long term. And I do think that, um, having that list needs to be a much quicker process, because the more people can be prepared and get their neighbors, for instance, I live in a subdivision, he lives in a subdivision, the more that we can plan ahead, even though we understand it's a couple years off, the more prepared we are in trying to figure out numbers and who's in and who's out, and there's gonna be a multitude of, you know, companies that can do this. But those who are getting out there to educate are smart to do that, because ultimately, we need to be prepared. So I think that if we could not wait a couple of years, I think we should move faster.
Yeah, just, just to that point, uh, I have had several people, like I said, come in and, and chat, and one of the things, some people have been nervous, well, where do I go, what's my plan for using? And I know Dan Pelletier has actually gone out and visited people at their home and has, uh, got the plans from Megan, has seen where their septic system is, and has kind of explained to them some of the basics. I think under the regulation right now, the only thing that we require is that the system be designed by a PE.
Mm-hmm.
So anyone can go out and get a qualified PE to meet with them and, and do the work now, to, to look at those, those, how would I get it? Would I go through my basement, or stay outside, or, or those, those questions? It's the licensed utility installer that has to be kind of vetted, that the people would actually do, physically do the work.
Right.
And where the work's not gonna be done, then I think we do have time to do, do diligence, uh, but right now, by our own regulation, they can get a PE tomorrow. The only thing I have in suggesting to people is codes change, and as an administrator, I know I've, I've got plans, old plans, and had to try to implement it, and they had me update codes, so if you go too far in advance, you know, you may have a plan that needs to then be checked on to make sure the plumbing code hadn't changed or any of the other codes. So I think that if people want to do preliminary planning to get a sense, they can hire a PE now. All we're doing is people are saying, well, who do you recommend? And we're just saying, these are folks that are, uh, have done some of this work in the town of Harwich.
Right, but I think to that point, you know, the more we can get ahead of these things, so that we're not, because the staff are still gonna have their daily jobs to do. And, you know, the same way is it's not gonna be, Dan's not gonna be able to go and visit people as this, as this project ramps up, there's not gonna be that time and resource. There's gonna be time and resources allotted to it and to the everyday factors of life that their jobs that they already do. So I, I think that more we can try to plan to be prepared, even though understanding that there are limitations on how far you can go, helps us all in the, in the long run. So, any further discussion on that?
Well, I agree, you know, I obviously agree with that, because I brought it up, but I think that, uh, we need to provide additional, uh, planning help to the residents, and maybe that's a list of potential PE's, Chris, that you, uh, that the town's comfortable with. Because right now, we're letting people hang out there somewhat, and the answer that's not happening for three years is not the answer that they want to hear. They want to hear it's happening, but they want to say, you know, help me feel good about, that I have an idea of what's happening.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we need to, we need to do that.
Sorry, David, to interrupt.
No, I, I mean, everything you're all saying is very good. Um, I try to keep things simple, so if you think of it as a three-step process, the first step is, we're gonna have our design, as you indicated, you know, ninety plus percent on October fifteenth. So that's when people will know where the pipe that they're gonna connect to is actually gonna be located, what elevation and those things, versus, you know, we've had some conceptual plans that we've been willing to share with anyone to date, but it's conceptual. So at that point, it'll be more hard and fast. And then from that point, for two and a half years, they can work with their professional engineer, whoever they so choose, and that's what that firm is that's been sending the letters out, that's what they do, they're the professional engineer looking to work with the homeowner to design that connection. They're not necessarily out there looking to install it. So- So they have two and a half years to then figure out where, if it's at the right side or where it's going. And then two and a half years down the road is when they're going to hire a licensed utility installer to actually put that connection in the ground. Unless, and there's always exceptions, you know, somebody wanted to do some, some improvement to their property and they wanted to put the pipe connection in as a dry line prior to. So if you keep it in those sort of three steps, I think that helps people simplify it.
I just have a question. Stan Pastuzak on 21 Northeast. If you mentioned during the summer season, whatever, say they're laying pipe in my street, am I going to need to know where that connection's going to be? Because that's some of the design phase we've heard, you know, we, we need to know with the engineer, have a layout and where that connection for our house is going to be connecting into the sewer. So I'm not sure what the timing is on that now, if they're laying pipe in our street.
Nope, very good question. What happens is during the design, we leave what's known as a Y-connection. Just means it's from the, the pipe in the middle of the street over to your property line. We make an allowance for one for every property that we go by. And then, once the project is bid, we have a resident engineer would be out there. We've sent a card to the landowner, property owner. You've sent it back. Our resident engineer gets in touch with you and reviews with you on your property where that connection would then be left. Whether you have an actual plan at that time or conceptually you work it out with our resident engineer, that can be done at that time.
So at that point, you would leave?
And what we would do, too, is when we run that connection over, we're going to do a GPS coordinate. So everyone will be able to find where that pipe is going forward in the future.
And the homeowner will, will have already worked out where they want that connection, either with yours?
That would be the ideal world, or they could still do it at that point, and our resident engineer would work with them, as Dan is now going out and meeting with some folks.
Okay. Any further questions?
Good?
Thank you, Dave.
The, I don't know, and the last topic here was just, I think administration is kind of looking, Larry's put together kind of a scope for a wastewater communication outreach coordinator. It would be interesting to know what elements, before he goes too far, what elements that are going to be done by CDM versus what elements are going to be done, you know, by this coordinator position. So if questions come up, if Dave could stay in case there's any questions in regards to that.
All right, so do you have?
Well, this was on the, this is actually a repeat of the agenda item we had last meeting. And what we did, and I brought this back to the wastewater support committee, and added one or two more, one or two more statements on this, but I was actually a little disappointed because I was hoping to, I know I'd asked Chris to bring this back as a draft RFP so we could have a more detailed discussion. Because I intentionally left this somewhat broad, thinking that when this went out, we'd ask detailed questions whoever answered the question, so we would know, I guess my idea of the capability, what the suggestions were. I think, you know, as I said last time, I think, you know, Dave Young, obviously, and CDM Smith has done an excellent job in the engineering aspect, I feel, have felt strongly for a long time, that we need a single point of communication to be sure this moves forward in an organized and, and direct way. And unfortunately, I'd point to tonight as a, tonight's meeting emphasizes that point. Because this came to us through a Friday package, an agenda package, it bypassed any idea of how to coordinate this to get it out to the community that we're discussing these, these topics. It bypassed the wastewater support committee, and any input they might have to, to bring this forward. So I think an RFP to see what we get some contract work to help pull this together is what I was, what I was looking for. And I would still ask that, and maybe it didn't happen this time because we didn't have a formal vote to move forward. I'm not sure what happened, but I would still like to have this come back with, Chris and Evan are the RFP experts, put this together in a format that we could take out and, and see what we get back from the response. I think it's vitally important that we have a, as we move forward, we take an extra step to coordinate and be sure we're, people understand where we're going. You know, we had some of that discussion on the DHY activities falls into this. And I think even at this point, it's a time to look and see if there are other experts that can help us move forwards and more, some insight.
Don?
Yeah, I want to chime in to support Larry's view of this. I want this to come off as being snarky, but I'm not negotiating with CDM Smith to cede any authority or anything. This is the Board of Selectmen that have the authority to try to get the town engaged bilaterally, but with what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, what you have to be able to do tomorrow, what you need, what you can put off till like a month from now. There's a lot of competing interests. There's a competing interest for the chair coming in to do the agenda. To have one-point person, and I, and I made this comment relative to the town administrator, we had at one point said that you could call you or email you. But you're not going to pick up the phone in the afternoon and say wastewater central speaking, can I help you? You don't have the time for that. Nobody has the time for everything that's involved with this, which makes Larry's proposal appealing, because we are going to show that we care that much about this, to have an entity that's going to both listen and respond. And that's their sole function in this. It's not to engineer the thing, it's not to build the thing, it's to communicate to the public, because it's a really expensive thing. And they need to be able to know what they need to do and when they need to do it and have a sympathetic ear to, to call. I think it's our responsibility to have somebody like that.
Yeah. I guess I was just unclear as to whether the board officially said this is the scope we want to pursue or not. So that's why, and I apologize that we had a little miscommunication. So if, if this is what the board wants, then we'll send out an RFP structured on this.
So, Ed, do you have any comments? So I, I have a comment in the sense that I would like to take it further. And I know that that requires us finding money, more money. But I look at it as, to your point, Larry, I definitely think this is needed, but I think it's even above that. So I think it's an intermediary that oversees between, you know, we've got Dan who's going to be doing a ton, Chris who can't, can't take on more. I mean, as this project ramps up, it's going to be a lot more. And so I see it as something that goes as an intermediary between CDM and Dan and oversees the project like a normal major construction project, to make sure that all the pieces are coming together under one group. So that means that that person is also not only responsible for communication and education and fielding, but also to make sure the various departments are talking to each other and that the contractor and the town are working smoothly. Because the other piece of this that, you know, we haven't talked about at great length, because I know we're not there yet, but we technically really need to be focusing on, are any easements that we need to get. And that can be something that really, you know, follows up our project if, if that takes a lengthier time. And I know I brought that up a couple of years ago, because I watched it happen, and I know Chatham struggled with it. So I, I see it as even more than this. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I would like to see something comprehensive. Ed?
Well, in what, what's being, what Larry's put together is simply a proposal on how to manage the communications between us, the contractor, and, and the folks, the folks out, out in the neighborhoods that are going to have the work done in their neighborhoods. What you're talking about is basically having an owner's project manager that isn't somebody that is also responsible on the side administering the town or running the water system or overseeing the natural resources department, you know. But that's all of their, their focus is to represent the town and taxpayers and, and the sewer users in making sure the project that's built is built the most, the best it can and the most efficiently and with as minimum number of hiccups along the way as possible. But not necessarily that is that person going to be responsible for the communication with, with the neighborhood. It's more, it's somebody who's going to look at, look at the requisitions as they come in and make sure that the charge that we're getting hit for pipe is, is reasonable and, and that the pipe that we're being charged for has actually been delivered, you know, and all of those sorts of issues.
If I may, I, I think last year I, I proposed what you're talking about, project manager and the, and the coordination. I've, I backed away from that and I would like to stay for two reasons. One is, is, is cost. And that was, it was and is a concern. And the other one is, is in terms of priorities, I felt that we shouldn't try to, well, that sounds flippant, but I'll say it anyway. You know, there's no way to, we shouldn't try to solve world hunger at this point. Just prioritize and see if we can solve the coordination and move that forward. And let's see how that works, what type of biz we give back. And then we may want to go back and look at the, because that's really a different scope.
It is, it is.
And I brought this in to, to limit it, because we have limited budget, you know, do the communication. I, I haven't given up on that entirely, but I decided when I put this together to stay away from that and keep it more focused.
So we can start, we're, we can start with that. I mean, I think we need to be, I think we need to be sensitive to the fact that we may need more.
Oh, yeah.
Ed?
Well, just, you know, if, if you're thinking you might want to employ a project manager to represent the town, you really need to have that person in place before you start putting out contracts. And, and I mean, it needs, that person needs to be part of the contractor review process on our behalf.
Don?
I agree largely with both Ed and Larry, but they're different things. I mean, they're really different things. I'm sure the public really wants some assurance that the pipe is being laid properly and that the vendors are being coordinated properly, and, and that goes without saying, there's a lot of money in this. But need I remind everybody that it was only a few months ago that we were making the assumption that the Board of Health was already acting on creating regulations about granting relief for septic failures in between? They weren't. There was no agenda. I mean, we're assuming too many things that aren't happening. And while I'm real concerned about them building the system, I'm very concerned that the public that hooks into it actually knows what's going on and when it's going on, and that even the town agencies know what's expected of them. And there's just way too much involved in this to just say, okay, we're going to allocate it to these two gentlemen over here and they can do it in their spare time while they're sleeping. It's not going to happen. There's just way too much. We talk all the time about timeliness of responses for this or that. We're not going to be able to layer something this dramatic on top of the duties of the assistant town administrator and the town administrator and expect by miracle that they'll be able to absorb that as well as do everything else they were doing. You know, contract reviews, personnel responsibilities. It isn't going to happen. We need someone who's going to be out there, understanding that if there's an egregious problem, that the majority of people are saying, you know, twenty, fifty, a hundred people are saying, what about this? That there's somebody there that's a focal point that bring it back to town government and say, you know, there's a lot of people who are concerned about this thing over here that hasn't happened. We don't have that person right now. There is no point person for how the construct of the government is working. It's not just the pipes, it's how, how's the government working and what does the government expect from the people who are hooking up? And what do the people who are hooking up expect for communicating with the government? There is no one stop for that.
Madam Chair, if I may, I, this is probably a bit self-serving. Let me, let me move that we ask a town administrator and staff to draft an RFP for a contract wastewater communication outreach coordinator, consistent with the document that is in the package.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Discussion of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee's nomination.
We already did it.
We did do that. Green fleet, fuel-efficient vehicle replacement policy, second reading. Do you want to have Evan?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Evan do the, the piece of what was presented last time. Just maybe an overview again.
Sure. You know, this being the second reading, we had it last time. It is the, the same general points, which is that we, as part of the green communities criterion, we need to adopt five different criterias, and this policy is one of those five. And again, this isn't a policy for the current vehicles, it's, it's a policy for the replacement of said vehicles.
Ed?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Town of Harwich Fuel Efficient Vehicle Policy, second reading.
Second, then.
Any further discussion? He seconded. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Town Hall Vehicles Review.
Just at the end of the last discussion, at the last meeting, there was some concern about what the, what the program was going to be, what it looked like. So I did ask Evan to put together a, an outline of what that program is.
So this is, you have majority of this spreadsheet. And this was some additional material to the bottom of it that happened Thursday and Friday. So before we get to this longer page, if we can just take a look back at the Town Hall Vehicle Review. You know, as I mentioned last time, this is the study that Bob Lawton had done. And he took a look at the hours used, and he took a look at the needs, and he came up with seven vehicles was his recommendation. And that is based mainly on the idea that the building department has five different employees needing to use a vehicle in the field and that they were at one or one and a half when they borrowed the assessor's vehicle, which of course affects the assessors as well. So he recommended seven. And one of the things that, you know, I've used successfully in, in, in other towns is, and, and it's another document on there, it's, it's an online calendar. So it's this way of, of signing up in, ahead of time for things that you're going to be doing. You know, understandably not every time you, you're able to go on an inspect, inspection is, you know, ahead of time, but when you do and you can plan it out, I think it could be an even more efficient use of, of the vehicles than, than, than currently laid out in this review. So I thought that was something of interest as well that we could use that takes advantage of current technology. And then the other document that I have, and please stop me if there are some questions as I go, where we can go over them, is a cost per mile study. And the new portion of that is a vehicle repli, a vehicle replacement plan as well. So there are four vehicles in this cost per mile study. One is a four-wheel-drive Outlander plug-in hybrid, and that's the vehicle that we have been talking about from the past meeting. And this is a vehicle with From the past meeting and this is a vehicle with the capability that the fleet does not currently have. Fleet is composed of police cruisers with rear wheel drive. That are on the older side, we'll say. And so if we follow through, and I I believe that the board wanted some more information on this and I I hope that I provided it. If we look at the miles per gallon equivalent, we we can see that it's getting seventy-four miles per gallon equivalent. That ends up being seventeen, seven point two cents per mile. When we factor in how much the vehicle's gonna cost over three years, that comes out to, if you skip all the way to the end. Total cost per mile of fifty-one point six seven cents per mile. And if we compare that to the reimbursement rate that employees are currently getting at fifty-four and a half cents. That looks to be about revenue neutral in order to get a a vehicle to the fleet. That is is new. It's going to be highly efficient and it's all wheel drive, so those are three capabilities that the the fleet doesn't currently have and. It's at a revenue neutral or possibly maybe a little bit less. But the Bob Lawton study didn't ask for six vehicles, it asked for seven. And I'm I'm not proposing and and town administrations are proposing that every single vehicle in the fleet is going to be four wheel drive. I think that'd be pretty expensive, so in addition to this, we've added down here at the bottom a two wheel drive plug-in. And as you can see, that's a lot more efficient, obviously, an all wheel drive SUV, full-size SUV is less efficient than a two wheel drive. Vehicle and as it's more efficient, we skip all the way down to the end, we've got about thirty-five cents. Cost per mile, so it's with that vehicle and and I believe the the fleet's gonna be half or mostly composed of. Of those types of vehicles that we can really eat into the to the total cost per mile of switching to these. Versus reimbursing in the future. And, you know, because we've asked for the seven vehicles or the the seven vehicles are recommended. Wanted to take a look at what that, how much that would cost if we went the conventional route, if we didn't use the 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 federal. Rebates that are out there and we just went with a four wheel drive Ford Explorer. On the state contract, that's a little over thirty-two thousand. And that ends up being more than double the total cost per mile because it's it's such a large capital expenditure and it's. It's not nearly as efficient as well. If there are no questions on that, just one last portion of this is the replacement plan and.
I do have a, I do have a question. Just not to get too detailed here, but you're, am I reading this right, you're looking at leasing the four wheel drive. You know, for basically twelve thousand dollars over three years. In some ways, that's not true cost, cause that's a subsidized cost from the government, but are you, the thirty-two thousand, that's. That's a purchase price, are you comparing a purchase price with a lease price?
Yeah, I'm I'm trying to show how how different the the capital expenditure is upfront and right, how how do we really amortize that, right? This study was kind of a a look at, you know, the first three years, so.
Yeah, it's just it's not quite comparing, I I was just just trying to figure out, it's not quite comparing.
And maybe we could compare that to six years and try and take the six year cost of it, you know.
Or you could compare what the lease price would be for each, then it would be.
Okay, we could go with the, right, the lease.
May not be necessary, but it's just, I couldn't, I didn't know what to make of that. The other, one more, one more question, Ed, then I'll get right back, so your, well, your plan is going is from five vehicles to seven vehicles.
I wanted to present that recommendation.
Okay, I'm sorry, I gotta head, Ed, sorry.
Yeah, well, you know. Um, the cost of the vehicles, you know, for the four wheel drive Outlander. Plug-in electric vehicle, it is subsidized. And and you may say that's not apples to apples, but it's it's the cost we'd be spending now. And and whether that subsidy is available three years from now or not.
Well, that's a question you could compare.
But you, if you're comparing what the cost is now, you compare the subsidized rate on the electric vehicle. To the unsubsidized rate on the conventional gasoline vehicle, because that's what we'd be paying now, there has never been a subsidy for those vehicles.
And I I can buy that, but we'd compare a lease to lease or something, so we're not comparing a capital ownership to a to a lease, doesn't that doesn't make sense to me. And I I recognize your problem, which is, I was looking at this and saying.
Well, I think back to what we originally asked Evan to provide is, I, you know, I think he's trying to pare it down to the best. Way he can with the, you know, most direct information, so it's never gonna, I don't see how it's gonna be perfect.
I I think Larry's point about having included three-year lease of the Ford Explorer is a good one, I would have added that to this. Suffice it to say, it would have been more, you know, per mile than a.
It wouldn't have caught my attention.
Don?
Yeah, I gotta open up another topic line here. I know it bothers me, I'm sure it bothers other people on board, I'm just one person I can think of particularly, but. You go through the parking lot and you see, you know, we're asking for two more cars and we're seeing three cars that aren't going anywhere and I had asked. And it would have been extremely. Important for people to decide whether they do wanna do, it's more, the money is really important to me, because, I mean, we're asking people to open up their wallets for. Awful lot of stuff, but let's go beyond that for a second, there's a reason for why those cars aren't out there. And it's aggravating everybody, we're having people who are opting to take their own vehicles out and we're providing them with a reimbursement. And if they're voting against using the the car that's providing for them because. They don't feel it's roadworthy in the wintertime, those things, I mean, even the police don't wanna use that kind of vehicle anymore. It would have been nice to get some data on how many times people opted to go out in their own vehicle. Because we can't, let's be clear about this, we can't mandate that they use their own vehicle, right? As a as a regular course of work?
We can mandate that they use town vehicles.
We can't mandate that they use their privately owned vehicle to work as as their work vehicle.
We can actually have people have a vehicle, use their own vehicle, if they use their own vehicle.
They have to use their vehicle in the conduct of their work, can we?
Yeah, I don't believe.
I mean, that's kind of a hard thing to pull out of you guys, can't tell them to do that.
Right.
So the question is, if they have said that they would rather do that than go out in that vehicle, that would have been kind of important to have a discussion over, but we don't have anything on that. And I specifically asked how many times over the last year do people take their own vehicles out out of choice, cause they didn't wanna be stuck in that.
We we do have the department head that is the building, building commissioner, Ray.
That's not the same as getting a log of people with dates.
He can certainly attest.
So I I I apologize, I went about this as a as a cost per mile instead of getting the lump sum amount. It it was seventy-five hundred for this year in the building department alone. And that was without Ray doing much recording.
But we can't mandate that they use them and it doesn't speak to the issue of how many times people took the vehicles out because they would really rather use their own vehicle. Rather than be stuck in the other vehicle, I mean, that's another discussion aside from the cost of this. And now we're talking about adding two more vehicles, you can't make that argument until you can get to the point of explaining why there are two or three vehicles sitting in a parking lot all the time.
So why don't we, uh, don't, not to interrupt you, Don, but why don't we let Ray address that?
Ray Chastley, Building Commissioner, well, it is true that some people would rather use their own vehicles. Rather than the the town provided vehicles for the reasons that you noted and but most people would rather use. A town provided vehicle, because a lot of these guys that are doing the inspection, the plumbing inspector, gas inspector, myself. We're we're all driving trucks and the reimbursement rate isn't really meant for trucks, it's been for cars, so. Especially the plumbing inspector, so we try to, he has a big box truck, so we try to. Have him use the assessor's car whenever possible, we shared, Don has been good above letting us share with it. But I think that's all cured with a with a vehicle policy, we just come up with a policy that either we're gonna provide vehicles. Or however we're gonna do it is is what I think has to happen here.
So in terms of the the staff, is it predominantly that they would prefer not to drive those other vehicles? Like in the wintertime?
In the wintertime, we have had trouble with those vehicles, the vehicles have gotten stuck in certain locations. There are some parts of Howard's that are difficult to get to in those vehicles and we make it a policy generally of not using those vehicles on. On really bad days, so that that is a problem.
And they're going to construction sites, so a lot of times you're not dealing with paved roads and.
Exactly.
Okay, well, how do you wanna proceed, this is a second reading on.
Well, I I think that just just one of the things, you guys just wrote in the second reading, you just wrote in the policy. The intent of that policy is to stop doing business the way we've been doing it, so the the way we've been doing it for just traditional use of vehicles. We just do the hand-me-downs from the police department, we use that, the policy that was adopted said you can, you should no longer do that. The benefit for us of doing it isn't just in the calculation of the vehicle, to be honest, it's not really super cost effective to do it. If we go from five to seven vehicles, I get that, we are adopting a a policy though that says we cannot continue to do what we're doing. By adopting that policy as one of the five that that we are adopting, we now make available to the community about a hundred and forty. To a hundred and fifty thousand dollars immediately, once those five elements are done as part of the green, as part of the Green Communities Act. Green Communities Program and then it also makes us available, once we become a green energy community, available for additional grants as we go.
Two hundred and fifty thousand per year.
Up to two hundred and fifty thousand per year, I look at this as kind of a little bit of a necessary evil. In order to access the additional money to to progress, so this doesn't, you know, dollars and cents, it makes us operate green. It does give us better vehicles, it may be a little bit more in the long run, a little bit more expensive overall if we run the seven. But it does get us access to those other elements, so like I said, I think it is a little bit of a necessary evil, you ask for some additional data, we got some additional. We can certainly look for some additional elements in terms of what we believe will be the utilization. I do think getting a few of these vehicles and let's see, I I see as well as you guys do, when you're driving to town hall, a lot of these vehicles just line up. A lot of times, staff tells me, they're afraid that they have to get picked up or towed.
Right.
So we need to do something different.
Yeah, and to your point, again, to reiterate, it's the hundred forty, hundred fifty thousand for becoming a green community, but to Evan's point. And and additional two hundred and fifty thousand that we have access to, right, so we need to be clear on that.
Hello, Tom Sherry, a quick question, have we considered the fact if you're gonna put seven hybrid vehicles in, you're gonna need seven charging stations? And is this building how big enough, I'm assuming you're gonna put it here, is our service big enough to handle seven, seven, I'm sorry, charging stations for those vehicles?
Yeah, so there has been, thank you, there has been some discussion about this already. We spoke with the water department and asked them to, whether or not we could just bring, put in some outlets. Maybe eventually we would like to put in charging stations which are just two hundred and forty volts, it's like, you know, your electric dryer, that type of thing. And so at that point, if we if we were to go with charging stations, yeah, we'd have to really look and see what the power capacity is down there, but. At first, we could definitely go with just regular one-ten volt sockets. And 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 those are fine, these vehicles are not being used all day and night as you and I would use them, you know, personally. They sit overnight and they'll be able to charge up at that time and on top of that, this Outlander is a plug-in hybrid. So it does have a gas backup engine, operates on electricity for the first twenty-two, twenty-three miles. And then it turns into a seventy-four mile per gallon equivalent hybrid, so the first vehicle, which is, you know, kind of what we're looking at at this point. Is to try and just get one foot in the door and and see if this does meet the building department and community development needs. And and then we would kind of go from there.
If I may.
Sure.
But you're not gonna be running extension cord out to this thing, that means you're gonna need some form of station, so you need electricity, you need to run conduit, you need. It's gonna be a little more involved than just plugging it in.
So to your point, we we've had discussions with Dan Pelletier and we actually do have conduit out. And around through the form of the lamps that are around and there's actually, one of the lamps is holding up a sign that says. Town vehicles only here and we talked about putting in two outlets or an outlet there. Now that would be very easy to do, for a starter, but to your point, you know, this this could be, could be something that develops more down the line. But I think that's kind of what the Green Communities grant is is there to to facilitate.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you, Evan, thank you for the additional information, I think I'd like to see the reimbursement rate, the reimbursements when they were made to who. Based on the calendar year, so we can see when people are driving their own vehicles, have have you proposed or is there a proposed. Policy for going forward on reimbursements, is that part of this, I guess to Mr. Sherry's question, are you gonna get us an actual estimate? Which Larry asked for on everything, an actual estimate, what the electricity is gonna cost and I think I'll finish with. We really went from last week sneaking in a vehicle after town meeting with found money to sneaking in two more. Is that really where we went? I guess Chris, you should answer that, you know, if we find money, shouldn't we give it back to the taxpayers and do this the correct way? Which would be budget, budget time, capital outlay and and getting an actual plan together.
Okay, well, go ahead, Chris, you wanna respond?
Well, just in terms of finding money, you know, any budget that's sixty-five million dollars. At the end of each year, we have what's called free cash, that things fall to free cash, what we've done in this circumstance, quite honestly, is. We we've taken some of that, Evans identified it related to vehicle expenditures in the community development department. And instead of having go to free cash and then putting in the capital budget and funding it, I thought that it would make some more sense that if the board adopted a policy. That you would embrace the policy by putting the vehicle in as soon as possible and we do have that ability to do that now. We could wait a year and then have that money fall to free cash and then and then put the request in too. I just thought if you're adopting a policy and you're setting a new trend, doesn't it make sense to try to implement that? So it it is a little creative to do that, certainly if the board doesn't wanna do that and and follow the traditional route. That's certainly a viable option as well.
So by doing that and prolonging, then we once again don't have access to the full monies that we are. By a green community or to the additional funds of the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Are you guessing that, are we guessing that we don't have?
To meet five criteria to truly become a green community, to have those funds open up to us.
Not what Evan said last week or two weeks ago.
You need to meet all five criteria, one of which is the green, the the vehicle.
But when we pass this through town town meeting this year, we didn't tell people we had to buy new vehicles this year, correct? Was there, was there a, was there a, we're passing the green community, so we gotta go out and buy a couple new electric cars?
I do believe that the description of becoming a green community is.
We said we were replacing the fleet.
And that it didn't involve the police and fire, we did.
There's no plan to spend money, we we can go back and review it if you like, there's no plan to spend.
Buying specific vehicles, but we talked about, we talked about becoming a green community and what that meant. Ed?
Couple of things, one, you know, a town meeting, we presented two of two of the elements. Necessary for becoming a green community, one is the zoning change. To to create a by right renewable energy zone, which we did and the other was to. Adopt the stretch energy code, which we did and as I remember, those were. If not, well, the zoning code requirements required a two-thirds vote. I know Michael wouldn't, it didn't require a standing vote, Michael wouldn't have done that if. It wasn't nearly unanimous from the voice vote, so, you know, town meeting, I think, is embraced. So, you know, town meeting, I think, has embraced the concept of the town moving ahead as a green community. You know, the other issue is, you know, you talk about this wasn't endorsed or voted, expenditure wasn't voted at town meeting. Well, you know, we started out the meeting by giving the go-ahead for something that we have no idea what it's going to cost. You know, the issue of developing the park for the flagpole. We didn't seem to have any suggestion that we needed to have that taken to town meeting to approve all of those expenditures. We were...
No, but we asked for detail.
Yeah, I know. And you have the detail of what this is going to cost.
Total detail?
From the cost of doing the lease.
Total detail, Ed?
Yeah.
So, hold on. Let's let each person talk. Don?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's not apples and oranges. We're not going out to build the vehicle with parts that we have laid up in the DPW, which is really what that park was about. What troubles me, where we are right now is, well, there's a couple of things that trouble me. But the first one is, we've somehow got, there was no discussion about going from five vehicles, where we knew for a fact, and it was aggravating the people going through the lot, where we had five vehicles, but at least two of them were hardly ever used. They were always sitting there. So, we've somehow gotten in this discussion from five to seven. That was never part of the discussion of adopting the green towns. So, number one, before we would ever, before I had ever agreed to go to seven, I'd want to see more efficient utilization of the ones we already have. If that means we turn some in and use them more, good. But why would you go to seven vehicles without even seeing what the effect is of turning over the fleet into more efficient vehicles to see if people are going to start using them in their totality? Because it's insane. We've never demonstrated that we are using all five of the ones we had. Never mind going to two more.
Yeah, I do think, Madam Chair, just to that point, you know, Bob Lawton has been in town administration for 30-plus years, and he was tasked with looking at it. And it was Bob's recommendation that we're kind of going on Bob's work. I said, and you know, I still am willing to say, you know, I personally think we should get started and see how effective these vehicles are. If we want to wait a year and do two, and personally, I think it makes more sense, we've identified, let's do one. We're not going to replace all seven, you know, this year anyway. I mean, this is a four-year replacement program. Why don't we get started, and we will adopt the calendar for the use of the vehicle, and let's see how effective we can be with vehicles that people are safe, feel safe in driving in.
And not to berate Bob Lawton, but we're tasked, along with the FinCom, of making some rational decisions based on the people who pay for these vehicles out there. Somehow, this got bloated by two more vehicles without us even knowing that what we were going to do was going to push the usage to the point where there aren't going to be, where there are going to be zero vehicles out there because people are doing their job in those vehicles. We don't know that yet. Everything else is speculation. And I will say, I do support what Michael was saying about the overall green towns thing. I came for the federal government. I worked as a program manager there. And I got to say that they're not exactly the greatest partners in the long term. They may be giving you $250,000 now, but that doesn't mean they're going to be there in three years when these things get replaced to give you another $250,000 to buy new ones. They're just not. I mean, this is seed money. It's like getting yourself involved in a grant, where if you only hire these two people, we'll give you a grant of $100,000, and then you got the two people, you got their benefits. And in two years from now, there's no more money, but it's up to you to pay them.
Okay. Ed?
I'm not sure, Don, if you misspoke, but this is a state program, not a federal program.
When you go up the ladder, there's increasingly less trust.
Yep.
Okay. So, let Ed speak.
Well, you know, in any event, you know, we have several questions. One, and I assume that we had answered this, of whether or not the town wants to become a green community and participate in the Green Communities Program. And given the amount of work and the number of issues and elements that we've already approved, I assume that answer was yes. That's one question. The other question is whether or not we're going to replace the town fleet with efficient vehicles. And the policy that we just adopted indicates that's our goal. The other issue has to do whether we feel comfortable about spending, allocating money that wasn't appropriated specifically at town meeting. And again, you know, it's, Don may think it's apples and oranges, but you know, we didn't seem to have a whole lot of concern about developing a brand-new park area with, without having town meeting approve of the expenditure of those dollars just two hours ago.
Evan?
Sure. So, I heard a couple of questions, and I just would like to provide some answers on them. So, this idea of using it with otherwise would-be turnbacks and turned into free cash next year. The reason why we did that is we thought we saw an immediate need in these departments. The departments that were getting towed because of old vehicles, these are departments that didn't have access to an all-wheel-drive. Not everybody has a sister or mom or brother who's got an all-wheel-drive vehicle that they can go and get reimbursement for. So, one thing was that this was an immediate need to get an all-wheel-drive vehicle. I mean, if this was just an academic, "Let's go out and get a plug-in vehicle", you know, it could be a two-wheel-drive one, then, you know, we might not have done it in this way. Second off, using department budgets to fund these plug-in vehicles is an accepted practice. They've done that in many, many towns with AAA ratings. So, these vehicles have such low expenditures, the threshold for starting a project and getting to trial and error with one of these vehicles is, the threshold for that is so low that it is oftentimes done out of the department budget. And just, third, I just wanted to make the point that this is fiscally responsible. Because of the federal incentives that are out there, this is going to cost much, much less than trying to replace this fleet of, even if we're just talking about five vehicles, all five of these vehicles need to be replaced. If we do it in a conventional way, where one of them, you know, I'm not sure what needs to happen, but you know, if one of them breaks down, breaks down, we are going to have to go with a brand-new vehicle. And in doing it this way, we would get a vehicle that has the subsidy. And then, at the end of the lease, we have the chance to buy that outright. And that would be at about the same price. So, we're talking about an all-wheel-drive vehicle, be about $12,000 to buy it out at the end. That's a $24,000 expenditure, whereas you would otherwise have an over $32,000 expenditure. So, you know, just, I wanted to make those parts. And, you know, if we want to separate the, and come back again with the vehicle replacement policy about whether or not we're going from seven to five, that's something that can come back again. But I would urge the board to take advantage of the federal incentives, you know, while they're still here, whether or not that's vehicle number six or that's vehicle number five.
Michael?
I just want to correct one thing. Nobody's talking about replacing these five vehicles with five more old Crown Vics or gas engines. Nobody at this table said that. My problem is replacing, adding two vehicles. And Ed's assumptions are all great on what we did. Had we gone through the process the way we should have gone through the process, we would have pitched this to town meeting, and it would have been part of the capital outlay experience, as was every other vehicle that we purchased. So, my problem is adding it now, and Chris, reducing the free cash number, which we always discuss what we're going to vote on. In the last two years, we've actually put money in stabilization so that in case we go through bad times like we have in the past, we'll have money. So, it's all part of planning. This is just adding something after the fact, and we're not following the process the way we have followed the process.
Madam Chair, maybe to put this to a merciful end. You know, why don't we just present this as part of the capital budget? We'll make an internal decision whether we keep it at five or whether we try to advocate for seven, do additional work. I don't think that that needs to be done tonight, quite honestly. I think that we'll submit that as the capital budget. I would like, just under town administrator, I mean, I do have the leased vehicle, and I just want to make sure I'm not getting my hands slapped too hardly if I... I mean, technically, you gave me the authority to go ahead and make decisions for, you know, purchasing things for under $50,000. This is under $50,000. I believe it's a valid funding source. It's been verified by the finance director that this is a valid funding source. But, you know, I guess I'd like to, and this is talking about just replacing one vehicle to jumpstart us. And then we'll bring back the replacement plan. But if there's a consensus of the board or majority, then I would like to at least go ahead with that or pull the plug on it, make a decision, and go.
Ed?
The fleet would remain at five? We'd get rid of one of the...
Yeah, I'd like to get rid of one now and then see what we're, see how effective it is.
Larry, did you have something more?
Well, I was just getting confused. Maybe you answered that, because last week you were talking about a replacement, then you were talking about adding one more vehicle and then two more vehicles. So, I'm just trying to follow the ball here on what we're doing, and that lost me. Before we answer that, if you're going back and look at, you know, some of these costs, one question I have is, as well as, you know, you talk about a three-year lease. What's the buyout after the lease?
It's about the same.
So, we pick up another $11,000 year four then to buy it out?
Right, exactly. So, in this, that's what we've, you know, about $20,000 per year should be enough to either continue leasing or buying them out at the end.
So, we can plan for that in the budget if we did that. I mean, I'm just trying to get the finances so I can understand them. But answer my first question.
Yeah, just to reiterate, I presented to have just one vehicle purchased, and I had it under town administrator for the $12,000, whatever, $11,009.
And that's a separate discussion.
Just to get us started on it. At that meeting, there was a heavy discussion about coming back with a more detailed plan. So, we pulled out the Bob Lawton plan, and that's where the five went from seven. That was Bob's recommendation. We don't need to accept Bob's recommendation, but we thought at least it would be honest to present Bob's recommendation. What I'm saying is, we'll revise that and bring it back as a capital budget item in the file.
Very quick question. I've had some experience leasing cars.
Can you?
Oh, Bob Pianodossi, 89 Bank Street. What's the mileage limitation on the lease?
$10,000 per year.
And this vehicle will stay within the $10,000?
Oh, yeah. Municipal vehicles, yeah.
They do? Okay.
Yeah, so the issue is that they all want to use them at the same time, and, you know, you know, other departments can speak better to that. But that's the main issue, is that they need to be out at the inspection, in the inspections at the same time.
So, you need a vehicle to go 10,000 miles a year?
Yeah, so it's actually kind of a great, it's kind of a great use for a lease because these vehicles aren't going to be, you know, driven to here in New Jersey a bunch of times. But you do need a couple of them, and that fits with...
And your cost projections go over 50 cents, wherever it was?
For the four-wheel-drive Outlander, we came out to $51.67. For a two-wheel-drive vehicle, we came out to 35 cents, and reimbursement's 54.
That includes insurance and...
Includes insurance.
Repairs, maintenance?
There's not going to be any repairs or maintenance on the new vehicle. If there was, they're covered, they're brand-new.
Okay.
They're covered.
All right, thank you.
Five or six years.
Okay.
I just have one comment. I mean, I'd feel somewhat better about this if we had a demonstration of trust that first, recognizing that there are vehicles that are sitting in that lot pretty much all the time. If we got something, if we got this one vehicle and got rid of two instead of one, because everyone's pretending here that when they're parked, they don't cost us anything. We have to insure them. I mean, and they're depreciating whether or not, as a matter of fact, one would argue that a car sitting in a parking lot is depreciating more than one that's driving because it deteriorates. But certainly, we pay for insurance.
So, I'll let the building commissioner speak to that if he wants. But my understanding of why they don't want to go with less vehicles is not because they get driven too much, but that's they need to get used at the exact same times.
But that has, in the parking lot, that doesn't show.
So, if you would go ahead and...
Just a quick comment, Stan Pastuzak again. If you're only doing 10,000 miles a year, I'd really like to see that lease versus buy analysis that you've done, because at 10,000 miles, you ought to get at least 100, 120,000 miles, no problem with these cars nowadays. And I can't see the justification of leasing versus buying at that point.
So, the idea would be that you have the option to buy at the end, once the incentive is pulled out. So, if you were going to do that, you would take, you know, whatever, let's just say a $30,000 car. If you buy it, you leave $5,000 on the table. If you lease it and then buy it, you've now taken out that chunk of five. But you don't have to do that, but you can do that.
All I mentioned was an analysis and comparison.
Okay. So, hold on one moment. Ray, did you have anything more you wanted to say? Because I think we need to move on from this subject.
Yeah, I just wanted, excuse me, I just wanted to just put a few facts on the table. Although the cars are in the parking lot quite often, Evan is right. It's because we use them all at the same time. And the inspections vary as to how many we have per day. But as an overall yearly factor, between the building, the plumbing, the gas, the electrical, we do upwards of 4,000 inspections per year. So, the vehicles, some vehicles are getting used, whether they're the town vehicles or the persons' vehicles, we're doing those inspections. Okay?
Thank you, Ray. Okay. Did you have something more you wanted to say?
Well, just a comment in terms of the cost of a fuel-efficient vehicle, you know, you could do, you could do it as a purchase, but if the town purchased it because we don't pay any taxes, we don't get any impact of the subsidy. Only through participating in the lease program that's done by a private individual, who, company who buys the vehicle, they get the subsidy benefit, can reduce the cost to us, which brings it down below what the cost would be if we purchased it. But we don't, towns don't, municipalities don't pay taxes, so we don't... Any of those subsidy incentive programs doesn't benefit us at all. The only, only through a lease can we receive any benefit.
Yeah, I just, just to the point, and I'm not going to belabor this at all, but these are vehicles that have 100, 150,000 of police miles on them, which if you know what police miles are, they're tough miles because they're idle miles. So, these aren't new vehicles, so it's not a new-vehicle-to-new-vehicle calculation. But I just want to, we will, you know, like I said, put this on for the capital plan. We will really look at the seven versus five. Don't be surprised if I come back with the five, just to kind of get this done. But the second part of what I was looking for is if there's a majority of the board that's comfortable with me acquiring the one vehicle to kind of get us started, adhere to the policy, you know, I'd like to be able to do that in good conscience.
Go ahead, Ed.
I'm comfortable, I don't know how I make a motion, is I, I move that I'm comfortable that town administrator go ahead with available, as else a lease of this, of one of these vehicles while taking one of the existing...
Off the, off of...
Old police cruisers off of, off of the fleet.
What are we making a motion under on the agenda? I'm confused.
Town administrator.
Under the town administrator. We're making a motion under the town administrator's report?
Town administrator.
And we haven't even gotten there yet.
Well...
I'm just confused for open meeting law reasons.
Ultimately, because we were on that subject, and I thought that was the point of consolidating that discussion.
Yeah, the board jumped over and did real estate and open space without an issue. I think as long as it's on the agenda. Make a motion under your report? All right. Well, technically, there's no action, so, you know, if the board wants to nod and say, well, let me, I'll rephrase it. I'm going to go ahead with the purchase. Okay? Well, technically, there's no action, so, you know, if the board wants to nod and say, well, let me, I'll rephrase it. I'm going to go ahead with the purchase. Okay?
We figured you were, Chris, or at least I figured you were.
No motions necessary. I'll go ahead with the purchase.
The public probably needs to know that that's because we have conveyed, delegated the contract authority to the town administrator.
Could have ended this conversation like twenty minutes ago or so. Okay, so let's move on to old business. Speed bump installation update Seabreeze Ave.
I don't know if any people hear from Seabreeze Ave, but just to, the board did vote to authorize the DPW to install speed bumps on Seabreeze Ave. And it also, we don't have funding available to do that, so it also voted to accept the gift of the speed bumps. Due to the holiday, we did miss a little bit of time. I had, one of my department heads was away. We have subsequently reached out to that community there in the process of ordering the speed bumps. We do have a traffic engineer from the county who has come down and has provided professional recommendation for where these should be spotted. So once we get the bumps, speed bumps actually in, the DPW will install them in accordance with the engineer's plan from the county.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any additional input needed, but I just wanted to give an update.
No, I just want to point out, I asked for this because we voted on it a month ago and nothing had been done and summer is coming quickly to an end.
I think it was on our agenda first June twentieth or so.
It's June twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, and then Link was on vacation. No offense, Link.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You voted this four weeks ago. I actually knew it was on the agenda. I called the chair and asked if I was to show up here, even though it was my first day of vacation. I went on vacation. I was unaware of the vote. Julie dismissed me, thankfully. Wednesday, my third day of vacation, our transfer station went down yet again, same thing as last year, right forth, Fourth of July. I went in Wednesday and half a day Thursday and we got it up running. Because I was there, I knew that I had some voice messages or some messages left on my desk. I had Chris Nickerson make contact with the petitioners and we got the ball rolling. When I got back from vacation, I have had several conversations with Lynn, the lead petitioner. I have engaged the Cape Cod Commission to come down. They inspected it last Monday. They've rendered a site plan, some analysis and so forth. I provided that to Lynn last Friday evening and everything's in the works. I believe she is ordering the speed bumps and as soon as they come in, we'll put them in in an agreed-upon fashion.
Thank you, Link.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Anything further?
Hi, Lynn Swines out to Seabreeze Avenue. I just want to reiterate that Mr. Hooper has been very helpful. We've had many discussions and we have recommendations and a plan and we're moving forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper.
Okay. Schoolhouse Road Parking Project, one, defer the application and expansion of Schoolhouse Parking Lot. And two, establish a charge for Harwich Port Parking Committee and request for committee volunteers. Ed, did you...
Well, I'd make a motion on the first part of that. When I move, we defer the application and expansion of the Schoolhouse Parking Lot.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to the establish a charge for the Harwich Port Parking Committee. Do you, Chris, do you want to talk to any portion of this?
Yeah, I would like to. I think there's a little bit of confusion. I've seen a few of the emails that have been sent in and I think that there's a little bit of co-mingle, co-mingling of concepts. Because originally, I thought the concept was to look at Harwich Port and how can we make the parking flow a little bit better and that we should do a committee to study kind of Harwich Port. And then I also had indicated at that meeting that perhaps we could have some folks park at, just to take, for the summer, take some of the pressure off, park more on a temporary basis at the former fire department and current Harbor Masters facility on two oh three Bank Street. And I know two of the letters that came in had specifically a parking study for two oh three Bank Street. And I don't think that was the original intent, was to study kind of parking in general and what can the town do to alleviate some of the parking concerns in the Harwich Port area. And the suggestion was made to form a committee. With all due respect to the press, that the board didn't take any action. They said that they would bring it back and decide what they wanted to do. But I would, I think the request that you'll have before you is to formally form the committee and to begin to recruit folks to go on there.
Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, I'm Bob Cohn of Twenty-Nine Pleasant Street and I've been involved with the parking discussion at Schoolhouse Road for the last month or so. And I thank you all for deferring that, that project. Over the last month or so, I've, it's dawned on me that when people talk about the parking problem in Harwich Port, they don't always mean the same thing. Businesspeople generally agree that parking, that the parking problem, and I'm using that in quotes, is lack of sufficient parking. Residents, on the other hand, more often hold that there is already too much parking on their streets, too many parking lots, too many beach parkers, too much traffic and congestion. And I have yet to meet a Pleasant Street neighbor who is happy with the on-street parking on Wednesday music night strolls. I'm not sure what you guys are actively looking to do with this committee. But there is, it's clear to me that it's not, is neither a right or a wrong about these competing interests. And I, first of all, request that the new parking committee be as democratic as possible and be formed, giving ample representation to residents with at least as many residents as businesspeople and town officers. Secondly, we sent you a letter back July sixth and we've now have thirty signees. I sent you a copy of that today. There's no significant change to what we said. There's no change other than additional signees. But in that original letter, we requested that a comprehensive, long-term and equitable plan be formulated. And here are some key items I think I'd like to include and have included or be evaluated by you. Be formulated with an eye toward preserving the town's neighborhood and character, preserving green space, fairness and sharing the parking burden across all neighborhoods. We feel that our neighborhood in particular has been zeroed in on as holding, as carrying the majority of the parking burden within the entire village. Fairness in assessing those businesses which require more parking and finding non-destructive solutions. And I suggest that that would be a good starting point of issues or points to keep in mind in charging the committee and moving forward. Third, I'd also add now that we be sure that we know exactly what we're fixing before we attempt to do so. Be sure that there is a problem that we're aware of. And to that end, I recently conducted myself an informal week-long parking lot survey. I sent you guys copies this afternoon because it took me a little time to slap it together, in which I took photos and made estimates of weeking, of the parking availability in the villages' parking lots twice a day, midday and evening throughout this last week. I sent you a copy of the spreadsheets this afternoon. You probably haven't gotten into it yet. And I've got some three hundred photos on a USB stick that I'd be more than happy to give to town administrator Chris Clark. I will. I've got it right in my pocket. So I don't want to go into much depth here about what I saw in my little informal survey. But I do believe it provides at least an informal guestimate snapshot of a peak week in summer. And some of the main takeaways, just a few, that beach parking was largely not an issue in the municipal lots. The municipal lots were full on Thursday, Friday and Saturday evenings, but there was wide availability in the private lots nearby. And there's virtually no availability anywhere during the Wednesday music night stroll. Finally, I'd like to put forward the names of a few people who I think would, I myself, not a year-rounder, so I won't be able to participate or don't volunteer to. But there are a few people here I'd like to nominate to participate in the committee. First is Chris Infirioli of Twenty-Sixteen Pleasant Street, who has been a resident here for fifteen years, has been very much involved in parking discussions over the last month. Second, Francis Rich, who's not here tonight, of Nineteen Tohe Lane, who formerly chaired a planning board and a zoning commission in Vermont and who would bring a great deal of pertinent experience to the table. And third, if he's willing, he's a little on the fence about it, Doug Carlson of Ten Pleasant Streets, whose family has lived on Pleasant Street since the eighteen nineties and spoke, who spoke very eloquently and knowledgeably at the planning board meeting at the end of June. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris? Just for the folks that are interested in applying for that, we do have a citizens, what do we call it? Citizens Activity Form. And if you just put other, then put Harwich Port Parking, you know, Committee. And then that would give, it's the same form we use for all committees and then the two members of the interview committee could review those and make those recommendations.
Did I approach the bench? This is the USB stick. The photo's on that. And Francis Rich had this, had volunteered to.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you again later about that.
Thank you.
And to be clear, I received multiple emails. I have forwarded them all on so that we could start a list for the interview committee, so. Richard?
Madam Chair, Richard Waystack. And I own one of the lots that has not had as much parking this year because we've posted it. Because it's been overflowing for year after year after year with beach parkers and employee parkers from the other businesses. But our lot, I'm behind the new building, I own that parking lot back there, and we've posted it specifically so that we could have, I've got four tenants in my building. The liquor store has a thriving business there. So we have on purpose shut that down so that we would have room for our tenants at our building. So when you see some availability there, that's the reason for that this particular year. But if you look at the old Sword and Shield or the Mad Minnow lot there, it's totally full pretty much all times. I go there every morning and the strolls, you're right, every spot in town is full. But I think two things I want you to think about, and I thought this was good last week when we talked about having the committee formed. But there was a parking study done. It was done by the planning board. Madam Chair, I made you aware of that and I believe you have a copy at this point, that whatever committee is appointed, that you start with the parking study that was already done here in two thousand and fourteen. Let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's make sure they have that information. Look at the recommendations that were made four years ago that were never implemented for whatever reason. And I think it's more than just a Harwich Port issue. You know, we've got the same issues here in Harwich Center. You know, we see you cannot bring two trucks side by side if you drive down Harwich Center here with the parking on both sides. So it's an issue not just of the port, but of the town. I think we need to address it. If you look at that committee, that don't just concern it. So I think your charge needs to be greater than just Harwich Port parking. It should be parking in Harwich.
Agreed. Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion?
Who's going to make the charge?
So we have to, well, we have to have that discussion. Oh, Cindy.
I'd be willing to take a stab at it unless Michael wants to.
Well, let's, let Cindy speak.
I just first want to, Cindy Williams, executive director of the Harwich Chamber. First, want to thank the residents that have come out again tonight, but also, it's now quarter after nine. I have about ten Harwich Port businesses that have taken the time out of their busy restaurants and schedules to come here. I'd like them each to have an opportunity to speak about this as well. I'm going to disagree with one of the comments that the gentleman earlier said. The beach parking is an issue. I am in my office every morning at seven AM and leave between nine and ten PM every night. My volunteers have watched it on a regular basis. So when we do come up with a plan, what we do need to look at first and foremost is how we're going to deter the people that do not take advantage of buying the beach stickers and do park in that parking lot. If any of the businesses would like to speak, this is your chance now. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Peter Hurst. I have a kite shop in Harwich Port. And I need some clarification this evening. Back in October of nineteen, of twenty seventeen, I'm tired, of twenty seventeen, Dennis Miller, who owns a considerable amount of property in town, we talked about the old Delia property, which is across from the Cumberland Farms. And I believe he, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he, Mr. Clark, I believe he showed the property to, Mr. Clark, I believe he submitted a letter to the Board of Selectmen and I believe he talked to the planning board. And that was back in October of two thousand and seventeen. I believe it was the first week of April or possibly the last week of March when he was notified that by the select, by the selectmen that nothing could be, nothing could happen this, this year. And if Mr. Miller would care to do so, he could do something in his own. What I find very disconcerting here is that six months passed with absolutely no communication with Mr. Miller, because I talked with him...
So I just want to correct you in the sense that Mr. Miller walked Harwich Port with Chris Clark.
Correct.
And Ally Sabatino, who was our planner at the time.
Correct.
That was December. And unfortunately, Ally left us and, for Chatham. And the ball did get dropped slightly in the winter months, I'd say probably January. Then Dennis Miller and I spoke directly multiple times via telephone and text.
Okay.
And then I spoke and Cindy Williams and I spoke, and we spoke with him and we spoke with Charlene.
Correct.
Unfortunately, due to the timing, we did, we had no ability to move forward for the town. So we said on a recommendation from the planning board that he could apply for a temporary special permit in order to have that parking.
Correct.
So to be clear, it wasn't back to October. There was, there was a time lag, I will say that, but it wasn't, it wasn't an extensive period of time.
Well, I mean, from October, I mean, I think maybe. That's just my feeling.
It wasn't October, it was December.
Yeah, I do think at that meeting when I had with him and my planner, the decision was made that it would probably be most prudent for him to propose something on his own property and present it to the planning board.
Correct.
He was encouraged at that time to take that action. He chose not to.
Correct, and I believe that was in March.
Now, that was in October or December, whatever that time was.
So December, you, December, he walked, he walked Harwich Port to share the properties he owed. And then after that, the follow-up on that was that as those discussions continued with myself and Dennis and Cindy and Charlene, ultimately, we had missed the mark, we had no money slated to do anything for that from a town perspective, but we certainly understood the need for parking. So we said to him, what you could do now is to go and get a special temporary permit for parking this summer.
Correct, and that was, I believe that was in March that that took place.
Yes, that's...
Correct, okay.
Madam Chair, since I, I was at that meeting, he was advised in whatever it was, December, to take that action and he chose not to.
That's fine. He was then told again in March because Cindy and I spoke. So there was a couple of follow-ups on the best way to proceed.
Well, then I guess maybe I've just been misinformed then because I was under the assumption that, and understand that I've had numerous conversations with Mr. Miller from having been in business there for forty-four years and understanding, of course, that when the, and it was a, the parking lot across from my store and is used by everyone in the town for as long as I can remember. And I think we all realized at that particular point, three, two or three years ago, that there was going to be a hardship, okay? And at that particular point in time, then I believe it's responsibility, as it says someplace, that it's the town planner and the select, and the select people and the boards, they have a responsibility to look for a solution to that. So three years ago, you know, and I'm sure you've been looking for solutions and this, this did appear. And from my conversations with Mr. Miller, I believe there was, too much time had lapsed between where that maybe this past year, if, in other words, if he was notified possibly, and you're saying that he was notified in December, he was told that he could go ahead on his own in December, you're telling me that?
I was part of the conversation.
I was part of it, but that's what it was. He could, in December, he was told that he could go forward, that the town, that the town didn't have the money.
That's correct. He was encouraged.
I just want to make sure that's, I just need clarification of this, okay? I just want to make sure that you're telling me that it was in December and that's fine. If that's the case, I'm certainly going to check on that, but I want to make sure that you're saying to me that it was December that he was notified of all that.
Yeah, I don't recall, I don't recall the specific date, but it was with the time. October, December, it was in that timeline.
It was October, well, the October, I believe, that was the first conversation you had with Mr. Miller, okay? So all I want to know is, I just want to know if it was in December that you told him, that's fine, but I just want clarification. If that's the case...
To be clear, to be clear, my contact with Mr. Miller began in February.
Okay.
So that's my contact. Late January, early February is when I was connected with Mr. Miller and Cindy and I spoke with him after that, following that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do recognize that the, you know, the parking problem is a problem and that, you know, we should have started sooner. So I think everybody can agree with that, so.
Hi, just Bob Cohn again. I just want to speak to the, a couple of things. The beach parking, I have seen it be a problem chiefly during the Fourth of July week. This last week, every... This last week, every day but one was sunny beach day. And I went to all the, I biked around to all the different lots, and there was no availability on Sunday in either the municipal lot or the North TD Bank lot. However, on Monday, there was 30% availability, all ballparks, and the photos will verify this, or not. 50% availability in the North TD Bank lot. On Tuesday, it was a little tight, 5% municipal lot, which is like a couple spaces, 15% in the North TD Bank lot, another four spaces or something. Wednesday, there's 75% availability on the North TD Bank lot. Thursday, 50%. Friday, 20% in one, 25% in the other. And Saturday was tight, 5% and 25%. More generally, what I've seen is that, and this speaks to something that I wanted to present in the last point, but didn't need to. There's been, our perception as the Pleasant Street neighbors, our perception is there's been some unfairness in sharing of the parking burden. The streets south, sorry, the streets south of 28 have very little, if any, on-street parking, while our neighborhood, Cross Street, Miles and Pleasant, Cross Street overflows every day, our street, it looks like a parking lot on Wednesday night strolls. It's just, and the major parking lots, public and private, all are centered, accommodated on the north side of 28. There's a couple, there's got to be 250 spaces between the municipal lot, the North TD Bank, the two bank lots, the middle lot. There's a big chunk of lots and a big chunk of traffic coming out into our streets, a big chunk of asphalt there. Meantime, there are these private lots, and I'm not looking, one more point on the beach parking, not to cause offense here, but you have two signs in the Waystack building that direct people to the municipal lot for beach parking. So that, you ought to get rid of them. But no offense. There, okay, okay. So what I have seen is that there is wide availability in the private lots during non-business hours. If you look at the Sunday School lot, if you're looking to increase beach parking, I don't know if you want to, but the Sunday School lot is wide open all day long. If you cordoned off an area, I'm not saying what to do.
Yeah, so.
At the same, in the evening? Okay.
So I think, I think that we can wrap up this conversation. I think we can all identify that parking is an issue. I think I can share your concern that your neighborhood has probably taken a disproportionate share of that for the proximity it is to downtown. It is unfortunate. We're looking at it. We're trying to address it. Overall, we cannot recommend that anybody be parking in somebody else's private lot. That's not up to us.
I'm not suggesting that it is. I just want, I wanted to make one.
So let's just, okay, if you could wrap up, so if any of the businesses that did stay would like to speak, that they get an opportunity to speak, and then I think we can move on from this.
One last thing, there's.
Hold on one second. Don?
Yeah, I'd just like to say one thing first. Everyone up here understands there's a problem. Everyone. It just, we could sit here and talk about what's going wrong and how it's going wrong. You could also take the misguided approach that we're going to fix it tonight, which isn't going to happen. Or you can understand that we can't appoint anybody until we come up with a charge. When we have the charge, which I would like to get the board rolling on to vote, to have a charge be written, then it gets adopted, then we can interview people, then we can, and that's the venue that you really want. I gather that everybody wants a mix of business people, residents, so that there are stakeholders in this thing, the town planner, and if this is constructed right, we'll have a look at all of the constellation of problems, try to look at what the inventory of parking is, maybe talk about a shuttle bus that goes around town on especially nights that have music, so that people aren't parking on Pleasant Street, but none of that is going to happen tonight. And until we get along towards the business, and certainly anybody who wants to speak should speak, but until we get to the business of setting up a charge, then appointing a committee, and then holding meetings, we're not going to come up with a solution. We're just going to be venting.
Right.
I didn't mean to vent. I just have some points that I wanted to bring up, and I'll pay you one for now.
I'm a big believer in activity is not the same as progress.
I think some of the business people are a little uncomfortable to stand up here. In fairness to everybody, there's going to be compromise here. It's not going to be all or nothing. I sat with the administrator in the planning board meeting that night, and we got beat up pretty well. The intent was, the intent was, and I turned right around and I looked at the folks on Pleasant Street, I advocate for them too. Get the cars off Pleasant Street. But if we get them off Pleasant Street, we've got to put them somewhere. And I thought we came up with a pretty good idea for the municipal lot. I still think it's a good idea. Parking and people are the lifeblood of this community for the business folks. I understand about the noise, and I listen to fishing boats every morning. I'm not suggesting that the board's going to restrict the fishing fleet because, so I can, that I don't hear them. I came into the meeting tonight, I listened to the concert at Brooks Park. It's loud. It's in a residential area. It's summertime, it's Cape Cod, I appreciate it, I live here too. But in fairness to the business people that have not had a real say in this, lifeblood is the, is the business community in this town. And we've worked for so many years. I didn't grow up here, I came here 41 years ago now. We work so hard to get that business community going in Howardport, and we have to work together. There's got to be compromise, and we have to respect the neighbors, I certainly do. But the goal was, that night, was to get those cars off Miles and get them off Pleasant Street and get them into a reasonably placed parking lot. And I think that's what we should do. But there's going to be compromise. It's not all or nothing.
Right. Thank you, Norman. I agree. And I was sitting there with Chris and you, so I remember the pummeling we took, so. I think that that was our main intent, was to get them off of those roads and back into the parking lot. Unfortunately, it, you know, didn't, wasn't seen as that, so. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. My name is Luther Bates. I'm a co-owner of the Nines Art Gallery. I'm also the chairman of the Chatham Economic Development Committee, who's been facing a similar problem to this for a little bit longer time. I think that from our perspective as a business community, we can agree that there is a parking problem. This is our second year, we've seen increased visitation. The businesses are improving in Howardport, period. There are new and existing thriving restaurants and other businesses, and there's a lot of people here from businesses that are actually open right now, that are taking the time to come out here and show that there is an issue. And while we respect the concerns of the residential neighbors, this is a compromise that needs to happen. As a result of the increased patron adoptions and town popularity, the vehicle traffic has increased during the prime hours. And while we might see a 20% vacancy rates in the private lots at 8:00 in the morning, that's not where we need to be solving the problem. So the committee is a, is a good idea from our perspective, and we have seen cars circling lots just looking for spots during dinnertime. We ourselves, Lauren and I, we have spots in the back of our building, we've been blocked in multiple times by people just going for a walk in Howardport, and it's like time to pick up the kids and we can't get out of there. It's a real issue. The parking committee can evaluate the entirety of the options to solve our shared issue, and I would suggest the following charge. The committee should evaluate the options for expanding the parking in Howardport while remaining respectful of the community. I think that's our general goal, and I think we should work together, and we should populate it with seven people. Thank you.
Thank you. No, you know what? I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think we've covered everything we can cover, so.
Madam Chair, I move, I move we establish a seven-member ad hoc committee, and I think, and we'll ask Don how to be, to chair and come back with a charge.
Or else go under the witness protection protocol.
Ed?
And if he wants somebody to act as an editor or vetter, I'll work with you.
Thanks.
Okay.
That was a motion and a second.
Second, so.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just, just a thank you to the restaurant owners and the business owners that came out tonight. We appreciate it, and you guys are doing a great job down there.
You too.
Thank you.
We have thanked the residents.
And also thanks to the restaurateurs for the good eats. Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the residents?
And, yeah, we.
We said it. Okay, moving on.
All right. So now we're on to contracts. Extend the drainage contract for Robert B. Hour for one additional year per the recommendation of the DPW director.
See, this was supposed to be next to that. Emily.
I link.
I move that we extend the drainage contract for Robert B. Hour for one additional year per the recommendation of the DPW director.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded.
To approve the recommendation to extend the contract.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Could you take the conversation outside, so?
Nice talking to you, Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you, and never underestimate my ability to clear room.
Madam Chair, hopefully I can make this kind of quick. Just, we already talked about A, so I think that that's all said. On the market rate adjustment for building department inspections, we, I just wanted to kind of disclose that in the, in the budget for the development of FY '19, the building inspector had put in there a higher level to compensate people. He had done a study, he had put it into the text of the budget, and it did go through the, the process as we did it. I'm just kind of disclosing that we are making an adjustment. Because it's a departmental policy, there's no action that's needed by the board, I just wanted to disclose that that was being done. So folks that do some of that work for us are getting adjusted to reflect the budget amount. On item C, the deputy fire chief vehicle, just, I said I would kind of announce that these are done. We did purchase a, another vehicle for the deputy fire chief, under $50,000, so just had the material in there, so we are disclosing that element. On the piping plover, the birds have finally taken flight, and I believe the, the concrete has been moved, so the parking lot now people can go to the turnaround. I think the last element was really the turnaround at the end of Red River Beach, so that is done. On the, or the birds have taken flight. On the, just the visiting nurse association contract is $5,000, so I just wanted to just let people know that that has been also approved. No change, that's been the same contract that we've had for the past. On the non-resident taxpayer meeting, it just, we do have public notice, and the non-resident taxpayer meeting is August 6th, which would be our next meeting because of the summer schedule. And the topics will include, but not be limited to, certainly if non-residents have items, we'll have some of the department heads here. But just to kind of read through, number one is Fire Station Two, the chief will be here to discuss that. Report of the Harbor Master, John Rendon, on the status of the Sacre Tucket Harbor Project, landside and waterside. Report of the Recreation Director, Eric Beebe, regarding beaches. Report of the DPW director, in the past has been discussions about beach and trash, so we thought we would have Mr. Hooper here available. And then at department heads, there was some discussion about, we want to try to encourage people that are here on a seasonal basis if they want to retire here. And one of the things that I thought may be a little different flavor that we have not done, but Judy Wilson, the Council on Aging Director, would like to do a little, what happens when you transition from being a seasonal person and want to move to Cape Cod or Howardport year-round? And what offerings do we have for programs for folks that are in that category? Channel 18, Jamie wanted to do a little, a little spiel, as she does the high-fives back there. On YouTube access, so when you do, when you're not in town and don't have Channel 18 available to you, you can still watch the selectmen's meetings for those that desire such. And then I was going to plan on doing a overview of the implementation of the CWMP, Comprehensive Waste Management Plan Phase Two, discuss a little bit with Pleasant Bay and East Howard. Maybe Larry could help me do a little bit of that, since we've been tag-teaming that in the past. And then the overall financial position of the town, Carol Coppola will come out and do a, kind of an overview of kind of financially where we are, and then have availability for questions and comments. And then the last item, I guess there was some question in regards to the finance director on, there are three positions that the board has the ability to review. I do the review by contract, and then the board votes. I have done the fire chief already for this year, and I also did the finance director. She was done and completed in March. And just in terms of that, I did have the police chief came in and saw me the other day. He, he should have had his for July 1. He said that he was okay with coming in on August 1, so I will be completing that. And if I can get that squared away, I will have that on for the board's consideration for August 6. So out of the three departments, department heads that the board has.
The direct hires.
The direct hires for the board, those reviews have been completed.
Were you also going to have the cultural district update? Charlene and I were going to do a PowerPoint that night.
On the non-resident taxpayer.
Yep. You had asked for us to put something together to update everyone regarding the cultural districts.
So we'll, we'll add that as part of the agenda of the items to be discussed.
Thank you.
Sorry. That concludes my comments this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Larry?
I know we've had some, well, let me back up. We all, it's been press release that Conservation Law Foundation is, I don't think they've done it yet, but they're thinking of suing a closet in Wishmere. And they're such important businesses, I'm requesting or suggesting that we add them to our next agenda item to, to discuss if there's a role that we as selectmen can take in, in supporting these two important businesses in town. You know, I know, I think Chris has mentioned earlier that they, they're taking action on their own, but I'd like to have a discussion and look at what options we have to make a statement as town selectmen in supporting them. And, you know, it's a funny issue, because they're already in our comprehensive waste file. Well, I'll leave it for the agenda, that's my request.
That's right. Okay. Michael?
I had dinner in Howardport five times the last two weeks, and I always found a parking spot. So I think, I think that, I just want to say that I think they're doing a great job. I'll reiterate what I said before.
Did you walk a mile to it though?
No. Parked and went in.
Ed?
On the town administrator's report, the item B, the market rate adjustment for the building department inspection rates, I think the inspectors, having seen that rate stay the same for quite some years, fully deserved it. Question on the other side of it is, have we done a market study of our fees, the inspection fees that.
Based on the cost.
Yes.
That compare, compared to other towns.
Yes, actually, I think we have it on for August 20th, because we have to, we have to post any fee adjustments.
Yeah.
So the, it's been in the newspaper, and there will be a recommendation for one of the meetings in August. I want to say August 20th, because I don't think we made it in the paper in time for the August 6th meeting. Is that right? I, I'm not remembering, but it's in August to look at that exactly.
And the other, the other thing that, you know, the, the building fees and development fees are one thing, but there's a whole variety of other fees that the, are under the, technically under the auspices of the selectmen. I know the last time I was involved with an update is about eight years ago, if not nine. And the fees was voted not to change them at that time. I don't believe there's been an update since then. I would imagine that we always tried to stay in the ballpark with other towns. I can't imagine that the towns in our Ketchmon area have all stayed the same over the last nine years. Cost of manpower and to do the inspections or whatever has gone up, so I think we should begin a process, because it's timely to collect all the data. But it would be nice to get it in place for the next calendar year, so we can then look at including it in coming year's budgets.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Yeah, as the chief alluded to before, it was an honor to be.
Yeah, well, as the chief alluded to before, it was an honor to be at both retiring Captain John Clark's day, which Julie got to two later that day. And it's always a distinct honor to go when they promote or bring new people in. The culture there is terrific, and John's comment was particularly noteworthy, at least one thing he said, that, it's not to paraphrase it too much, but what would your team look like, whatever your team is, if everybody on your team looked and acted just like you? And the, extrapolating from that, it was really about, you don't want everybody to be just like you, you need a variation of other opinions and different observations, and it was a very inspirational speech. I appreciated being there.
Okay, I have a couple just reminders. As Carolyn announced tonight, on 8/4, the Community Center holds a yard sale with a $25 fee for a table, so all public is welcome. The taxpayers' meeting on 8/6, what time is that at?
I believe we did it at 6:30.
Okay, 6:30. And I did want to say, this is a great opportunity to goodbye, the fire department, to say goodbye to Captain Clark, and what a great job he's done for our town. And overall, it's just been a good week weather-wise, so I guess we can't complain about that. And again, I hear great things on, you know, I haven't gotten down to Harwichport for dinner this week, this past week, but that's all I'm hearing, is great things about Harwichport and how people are coming to Harwichport from Chatham, which is a great thing. I know the parking's a problem, but we'll figure it out. Michael found a spot, so.
No problem. I got to try.
Ed?
Well, I remember reading in the paper when it was announced that Chatham was going to be starting a music stroll, and that one of their selectmen indicated that, you know, they were going to give Harwich a run for his money, a run for our money, and so I wrote, dropped him a line, and I said, well, we all know that imitation is the highest form of flattery.
Yeah. Move your turn.
Second.
Our turn.